It is Tuesday, October 5th, and it is 6:38 PM. And we are here for the Town of Groton Town Council Committee of the Whole Special Meeting. Councillors present Granatowski, Bordelon, Bumgardner, Franco, Heed, Melendez, O'Bree, and Zepary. Councillor Parker is in another commitment on behalf of the council in negotiations for teacher contracts. We have a quorum with eight councillors. New business 2021 706 Conveyance Tax. This was on page two of the Cow Packet. Councillor Bumgardner, could you move that item, please? Sure.
You said page two of the Cow Packet?
Page two of the Cow Packet. It's 2021 706 Conveyance Tax.
So I'm making motions hereby move that the Town Council, Committee of the Whole pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 12-494, offers an additional increase for local conveyance taxes of one-fourth of one percent, .25 percent effective November 1st, 2021, so much.
Is there a second?
Second, Franco.
Moved by Bumgardner and seconded by Franco. Madam Clerk, did you wish to speak to this so the public can hear the background on this and you could possibly explain it a little bit better, please?
Certainly. The state of Connecticut periodically reviews the demographics of towns within the state, and they will give compensation for and special dispensation to towns that qualify for a distressed community. And there's a formula that is very specific to specific issues or that may plague a town at any given time. So the town of Groton has been designated over the past few years, I would say, it may have started early in the 70s when Electric Boat had a large layoff. I guess that was mid to late 70s. And what this designation will do is qualify the town for additional funding from the state. And also, this particular resolution is specific to an increase of local conveyance fee. When we report a conveyance property, we collect a conveyance fee for the state of Connecticut and for the local town, for the general fund. And currently, our ratio is one-quarter of one percent. And this designation of a distressed community allows the town to raise the local conveyance, not the state, just the local conveyance, an additional one-quarter of one percent. So the total would be a half of a percent for the local conveyance fee. And that money goes directly into the general fund, as I've stated. And it has never been earmarked for any particular program, and that's something that the Town Council could consider if it's allowed. I haven't explored that avenue. It just occurred to me last week when this was all being discussed, that since it's because of the situation of less taxes being collected because of people moving out of this town and so forth, that we may want to set up something. I don't know. Anyway, we're now poised in our, in the Land Records Office of the Town Clerk to let this information be given to the public, especially to law firms and real estate offices across the country. This isn't something that just affects the town. We get recordings from all over the stretches of the United States because of commerce the way it is now. So we'll be able to disseminate that information with enough time to implement it if the November 1st date is given to us.
Thank you very much. We have councillors that have their hands up. I have Councillors O'Bree, Bumgardner, and Zepary. Councillor O'Bree, you have the floor?
Yes. I want to speak in opposition to this. I do not want Groton to be classified as a distressed town. We've had a lot of conversations at different meetings about how we are shown on like Zoom, not Zoom, but some of the real estate programs that you can go to, and Zillow especially, that's the kind of thing that they pick up and put out. And it's not that beneficial to us to be designated as a distressed town. We've been improving our schools, our community, our infrastructure, everything, to try to make Groton the wonderful place to live that it is. And if we vote this in and say, oh sure, it's another quarter percent when somebody's selling a house, I personally don't think it's worth it. Also, people that are selling their houses, most of them aren't selling because they want to sell. The situation that our lives are in right now make it so a lot of people are having to move. And that's another expense to the seller. It's not an expense to the buyer. And I feel the benefit of it could not warrant being called a distressed town or distressed anything. We don't want that kind of a designation. And I think that we have the ability to ask the state to take us off that list. The other items that they mentioned have worked very good. I mean, we do have the two areas that they mentioned about, you know, that were part of it, but what they had looked at. But the downside of this is the reputation of this town. And I'm hoping that the other councillors can see the merit of asking the state to take us off the list. And if you have any questions, anything, I'll be happy to answer those as a real estate agent. It's only going to be another detriment to the seller. And it's just not, there's not enough benefit to become a distressed town. And I hope you can all see that. That's what I had to say at this moment. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Councillor Bumgardner, you have the floor?
Thank you, madam. Thank you, madam. Is my microphone on?
Mr. Greeley, is it okay?
I can hear the feedback now. Thank you, Mr. Greeley. Correct me if I'm wrong, Clerk McCauser, but we have no choice of whether or not we can, we are a distressed municipality is that this designation is based upon a statutory formula that is outlined.
That's correct. You're correct.
So, um, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, you're correct. And we didn't choose to do this, and we can't choose not to be a distressed community. And there are benefits beyond the conveyance fee. And Finance Director Landry knows very well those benefits, and she may be able to expound on them. But remember that we were, we were on this recently, and just September 12th, 2019, is when we stopped collecting the additional revenue for conveyance fee. We're not talking about a huge amount of money, and we can put it to good use. You know, it's something that we don't have to ask the state for. We can do this, you know, from our own community.
Absolutely. And just again, reading the formulas or the components that create the formula to receive this designation, the underlying reasons for joining this list have to deal with change in unemployment, change in population growth. We've seen a net reduction in folks living in Groton. If you took a look at the census, almost 4% population loss since the census was conducted. So while I think there is much to celebrate in a very hot housing market, like we've never seen in southeastern Connecticut, and obviously significant growth at Electric Boat, and Pfizer doing better than ever, you know, we still have a lot of work to do to ensure that our residents have the tools necessary to be productive and citizens in Groton and have the supports they need. So, you know, the clerk had mentioned that, you know, not specified in our packet is how we can expend those dollars should we permit that quarter percent tax, whether or not we can earmark it for a certain purpose. And I certainly would encourage us to move in to, if we were to adopt this tax, to go into either two directions. One, earmark it for open space acquisition, like many municipalities have called for, or even at the state level have called for utilizing the conveyance tax revenues, or earmarking it for direct relief to residents, which we're also doing with ARPA funds. But definitely, you know, would encourage us to include some language as to what those funds will be specifically designated for as opposed to just the general fund. But thank you, Madam Clerk, and allowing for me to indulge Madam Mayor.
Now, we have Councillor Zepary and Bordelon. Councillor Zepary, you have the floor?
I think, yeah, I think that we are not a distressed community. Each year in the last two years, and each year in the last four years since I've been on the council, we have increased the surplus on our budget. We are about to vote in a legal rise in the surplus fund to 15% from 11%, which means we have enough money at the present time. I am very much opposed to adding taxes to increasing taxes for, you know, this seems like a frivolous thing, but we don't have a need to increase the taxes. And any increase in taxes is an extra burden on the people who live here or on the people who would want to live here by buying property here. I think this is a mistake. I just, I can't tell you how deeply I feel that this is an era that will come back to haunt us. So I think we should vote down a .25% increase in conveyance tax. Thank you.
Councillor Bordelon, you have the floor?
Thank you. I mean, I guess, as a few councillors have stated tonight, I'm just, also, I just want to add, one of the reasons, you know, of coming back live was to be present on the meetings. And at home, there was a last meeting where the cameras not being on was a concern. And here I sit at the meeting, and I'm not being viewed as we speak on the camera. So I just don't see the benefit just for the staff here, you know, for the camera. If we're going to be present, everybody should be viewed when they're speaking.
I think on cable, I think out there you are when you're speaking.
I don't know.
Just on Zoom, I think.
So it's only on Zoom?
That's a Zoom feed right there.
Yeah, because it's...
Oh, yeah, that right there.
The camera's currently on view.
Oh, it is. Okay. Just wanted to double verify because the view that we're getting from inside here is only a cut view. So just want to make sure that, you know, it was brought up at the last council meeting that councillor should be present and on the, on view, and that's why I'm here. I can share the concerns of adding extra taxes, but that doesn't change the fact that somehow in the state of Connecticut, we are being viewed as distressed. So if we choose to adopt this or not, it doesn't take away the data that's been given to us that multiple municipalities have stating that we're...
I'm so sorry to bother you.
Councillor O'Bree, you're not muted.
Call me tomorrow. It's all right.
Thank you. Councillor Bordelon, go ahead.
That this is a problem. And I think instead of shooting it down and worrying, being concerned about the extra expense, as councillors, we should be looking within to figure out where and how we got on this list, and what are we going to do as a town and a municipality to fix those corrections and make sure that when we're getting those ARPA funds coming in and other funding coming in our town, that we're looking at this group and data and really speaking with the state to see more about this data, to see where we can improve upon, to make this a thriving community and not fall under this criteria. Tonight, we can state that we don't believe we are, but that doesn't change the data that's before me. You know, you go to the doctor, they give you a diagnosis. You can't change it if you don't want it or not. So it's there. Now, we don't have to adopt it, but I think that does nothing. And so I guess my question is, as a town manager, what other data is present, or what else can we do as a municipality to make sure that we do not fall on this list as an outlier? And what can we do moving into the next two years to improve upon that so that we truly are not being marked as a community of need?
Councillor Mayor, would you like me to read the nine category items?
It's on page three in the packet, if you'd like to briefly for the public, but the councillors will have it in front of them.
I was going to read page six where it actually lists the criteria.
I think that's great for the public to hear.
Those nine, the nine criteria for being on the list?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Number one, per capita income. For two, these are all pretty much based on 19. Per capita income for 19. And by the way, it's the top 25 towns out of the 169 that make the list using these criteria weighted. Per capita income for 2019, weight of one. Percent of poverty in population for 2019, weight of one. Unemployment rate for 20, weight of two. Percent change in population from 2010 to 2020, weight of one. Percent change in employment from 2010 to 2020, weight one. Percent change in per capita income from 10 to 19, weight one. Percent of housing stock built before 1939 as of 2019, weight one-third. Percent population with high school degrees and higher in 19, weight of one. And finally, per capita adjusted equalized net grand list in 21 to 22, weight of one.
I just wanted to finish on my time.
You have 20 seconds.
So I think when we look at this, again, in what was just stated, looking at high school diploma rates, I feel like there should be a collaboration within our town with our Board of Ed and our town staff to look at ways that we can approve upon these. What programs, what workforce readiness programs we're doing at the high school, and what are we ensuring to make sure that high school graduates are getting high school diplomas? That's where we should be digging into and not kind of trying to hide the data and move forward and say, we don't think we deserve to be designated as this. If we are out of 169 towns, 25 of us are falling into this, we should be concerned. And that's where I'd like to move forward.
Thank you. That's time.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if those are new hands, or if you just didn't take your hands down from prior, but I will go to first-time speakers, Councillor Franco and Councillor Melendez. Did you wish to speak on this item? No. Okay. Councillor Franco, you have the floor, and then I'll double check with the councillors at home.
So unless I missed it, I'm not exactly sure where we ranked out of 1 through 69 towns. Where do we fall in?
I have nothing given that information. I can request it from the state.
That would be interesting.
Top 25, right?
Yeah, we're in the top 25, but we don't know on each of these where we rank.
So there's some of these I can agree upon, that we do have an old housing stock, and that's why new housing is being brought forward. A population decline, maybe because EB hasn't ramped up yet, they're hiring. But I would foresee that in the future that that would be changing if we could have the proper housing. I do have issues with where it says unemployment. And if this is going into 2019, I was told that Groton had extremely low unemployment. And so I'm not exactly sure why we were ranked this. Pre-COVID, we were extremely low. And from the data that I was given when we were discussing PLAs at the school and whether we should have union workers that were local working at the job site up there. And then there was job growth. If we're, I don't understand how we're ranked low. Is EB not ramping up their hiring? Is there not growth in our area for hiring?
I'm not prepared to answer off the fly on those. I'd have to look into them.
The unemployment's for 2020.
Okay.
So that's COVID unemployment, I would think.
And just so that, you know, I did, just fine, we're 19th out of 25, just so you know where we're ranked on that list.
What do you mean by 19 out of 25?
The top of the, I guess, I don't want to call them worse, the 25, of the 25, number one being the most distressed, we're 19 out of 25.
Okay.
Just a point of information.
Because this is our first time really seeing this and not understanding, there's not a lot of data here to actually dig into. I don't think anybody is hiding the data. I just don't think there's enough here to weigh, I personally don't think there's enough data to weigh which way we should go with this. And if we are a distressed community and we have problems with people with income issues and unemployment, why would we want to add an additional tax to them? And is there anybody here that can give us the details as to what the other benefits would be? Because I wouldn't want to tax people that are in distress an additional tax.
Is Director Landry here?
What's that?
Is Director Landry here?
She's not as well-versed as the town clerk on this.
Okay. Do you want, do you want the clerk to talk now?
Yes, please.
Okay. Madam Clerk, did you hear Councillor Franco's questions?
Yes, I did. I guess this information wasn't shared with everyone. But, excuse me. So understanding that a distressed municipality, there's a reimbursement of taxes lost for exemptions. Understanding there's a program, it's a description called the Distressed Municipality Property Tax Reimbursement Program, and it provides a five-year state reimbursement of portions of the property tax lost by towns sustained as a result of property tax exemptions granted to qualified manufacturing facilities located in or designated municipalities. And remember that we do have several businesses that qualify for these exemptions. And so by having this distinction, the town will now take 50% of what has been exempted. This is an opportunity in one respect, and I understand and respect the opinions that nobody wants to be considered a distressed community. It's the same thing, same feeling when we had a distinction for our education system, if you remember. Certainly, we don't have a poor education system or a poor town in most respects. But with the criteria built into this program, you know, towns are looked at regularly. Now, there's no saying that we won't fall off of this designation in two years. This happened to us in 2012. We were on, and then we were taken off in 2014. So it really, you just don't know if that'll happen. But in addition to the, so Connecticut reimburses eligible accounts up to 50% of the revenue lost during these exemptions. And then, and so it really is something we, you know, we need to consider. You can't stop doing that. We're going to apply for those. The item in front of you tonight is a matter of increasing a quarter of a percent, not 2.4. It's a one-quarter of a percent. So it's .25. So, and it would be half a percent. Right now, it's a quarter. And so adding a quarter, it'd be a half, a half a percent is pretty small. I can just give you, you know, we have been very busy with recordings for a year and a half. It's really been pretty incredible. Now, I looked at data for 18 days as of March 9th, and 18 days further forward. And we would have received an additional $68,000 with this one-quarter percent. I mean, there we go. See, I'm saying one-quarter. It's a quarter of a percent. You see that, you see what I'm talking about? And if you consider putting that into a program, I wouldn't necessarily want to take property off of tax rolls, but, you know, housing initiatives that the Economic Development Commission has initiated, there are things that would help the situation that we're in that Councillor Bordelon was talking about. It's not my position to tell you where to go, but there are programs that you could probably put this money toward.
Councillor Franco, you have time remaining, and then Mr. Burt wanted to speak as well.
It doesn't quite answer. I mean, I get part of it that we get the 50% revenue loss from the state during the exemption. But what other benefits is to being on this program? Do we get put at the front of the line for grants or things of that at the state? I mean, what else is there that would help us? I'm not, I'm not trying to say that we...
I do believe there's some additional benefits grant-wise. As I know Paige brought tracks whether we're distressed or not, and it did affect when we dropped off whether we could apply for certain things, I believe. I'd have to ask Paige further information.
And once we're on this list, do we have a time period where we can apply for all these? Or does that end as soon as you come off the list? Because I recall that there was conservation people that were saying we were considered a distressed city and that we could get the grants, more grants for being a distressed city. But does that go for a period of time, or as soon as you get off your not-eligible?
I can't answer that for those particular grants, but I know for the conveyance, because that's what I was in charge, you know, I was responsible for. When we came, when we came off the list for distressed communities, we were allowed to continue the program for five years. So that may be what, it may be similar to the other programs. That's something that, you know, the finance department would find out about.
Do we have a time period that we have to approve this quarter of a percent? Is there, are we in a timeframe that would we be able to...
Not at all.
Just that you can't go retroactive, right? So whatever you lose during the time you lose.
So I would like, I just would like some more information on this because I think I'm missing some pieces of the puzzle that I would like to be able to see before we go forward with that. And that's time. Mr. Burt?
Refer it to your finance committee. You have a finance committee?
Madam Clerk, Mr. Burt, you have the floor?
To answer part of it, I was going to ask about what kind of money this could possibly, you know, and knowing, understanding varies wildly on what comes through from year to year. And then unless you ask to come off the list, this decision would only affect the conveyance tax, and others would be there no matter what.
So this was sent to us by the Clerk's office, and we had to do the other grant tonight. That's why it was put on with this tonight. But certainly, it could wait if people want more information. I think we're just going to have to be very specific about what we need the clerk to bring to us. We have other people who wish to speak. So while they're speaking, if you have specific items, you might want to jot them down. Now, I have, again, I can't tell if they're new hands, Councillor O'Bree and Zepary. Do you wish to speak again?
I wish to speak again.
Okay. So I have O'Bree, Zepary, and Bordelon for their second time. Councillor O'Bree?
Open your mic, Breanna. Did better with it off. I just wanted to mention that some of this, I think, is impacted by the fact that Groton has an enormous amount of subsidized housing. And I have no problem with that. Don't misunderstand me. But, you know, Ledge does not have subsidized housing, or very little of it if they have it. Mystic Area, Stonington does not have any. Waterford does not have any. North Stonington doesn't have any. Preston doesn't have any. So we carry the burden here in Groton. And as I said, I don't have a problem with that. I'm happy that we can, one way or another, do it. But those numbers that are coming out of those units is what's impacting this. So I don't think that, I don't think it's a fair analyzing of it. I just, I just can't stress enough that we don't need that kind of classification. I'm sure we could talk to the state... I'm sure we could talk to the state, whoever the appropriate person would be, and ask what we can do to not have that designation. And, you know, the state charges a half a percent when there's a sale, and that would have then the town charging a half a percent. That means 1% of the sale price is going to taxes from the seller of that property. I think that's an unfair burden for anybody that's selling a home. You know, and I think we need to leave ours alone. We need to go and get some additional information as to how they calculate this and how we can get off that list. We are not distressed. We've grown, we've improved, and we want the world to know that. And I'm going to tell you, this is the kind of thing that when somebody's searching a town and they put in what's good, what's bad, they're going to come up with this kind of notification. And that's not what you want. So I, I just really, you know, I'm asking you all to really, really think about this. This is a real detriment to Groton. And that quarter percent is not going to make the difference between whether we can survive or not survive. I appreciate Betsy saying, well, it could be for some appropriate program. Absolutely, it could. But what kind of damage is it going to do? We don't want people not coming here. We want people to come to Groton. And all you need is one little bit of bad news, and all of a sudden, you know, you're on a rebuild. If we ever took this, we ought to take that money and put it into PR for Groton because we'll be on a downside. So please, think about it very, very seriously and join me in not voting for it when it comes time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Overy. Counsel Melendez, you have the floor for first time?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that we're kind of talking about two different things. The first thing is that whether we want to be on this list or not on this list, from my understanding, and I could be wrong, we are on the list. So, I mean, we are on the bottom 25 or top 25, however you want to say it, regardless of if we pass the conveyance tax or not. So the designation is there whether we want it or not. So the second thing is about whether or not we pass this conveyance tax. And I can understand arguments against saying if we are a distressed district, why do we raise taxes? But I think this program and, and, you know, the Clerk mentioned that in an 18-day period, I believe, it was over $60,000 that would have been raised. So that money, I mean, you can extrapolate that over, you know, a month, a year, however long you want. That's a lot of money that can be utilized to tackle some of these problems. So from where I sit, I think this is a great thing. I also agree with the town clerk. I, I consider this similar to being an alliance district. Do we want to be an alliance district? No, but, but we're not going to turn down the, the extra money. So I will be voting in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Melendez. I'm going to take my turn now. I concur with much of what Counsel Melendez has expressed. We are on this list. There's, you know, it's published already. Groton is one of the 25 distressed municipalities. I, I agree that this could be used, as Counsel Baumgardner has said, to help defray taxes. Well, how do you do that? The money goes right into the general fund. So if the money's in the general fund, that can be used at budget time for whatever the council so chooses to do with that money. So I, I think that the fact that we were on this list and we dropped off within, what, the next year, this two years out? And the way things are going with the hiring increasing and our housing stock's going to be newer, I'm certain we're going to be coming off of it again. And I think it would be a good opportunity for us to, to take this and use it to benefit the whole town with some money coming into the general fund. So I would be supportive of this. If councilors decide that they're looking for more information, I would ask that the Clerk forward whatever else is available to us regarding the benefits that you were outlining earlier, if they so choose to send it back to Committee of the Hall. But I'm prepared to vote on it, and I'm prepared to support 2021-706 conveyance tax. Thank you. Okay. We have Counsel Zepary and Counsel Bordelon for their second time. Counsel Zepary, you have the floor, sir?
Thank you. I would just like to comment, we're told that .25% is not much money and it doesn't amount to much. Well, if it's not much money and it doesn't amount to much, and we don't have a specific need for it, why should we levy a new tax on the people of this municipality? I think we have a reputation of being the tax and spend party. I think that this only feeds that reputation. I think we should hold the line on taxes. I think we should be working to reduce taxes, not to increase them. In our behavior in the past, we should do something to change that direction. And the direction should be no new taxes unless we really need them. Now, we're saying this is $60-some thousand that can be used for good things. Well, all money can be used for good things, but when you take it from other people, they don't have it to use for the good things that they're choosing. And it also gives the town a bad appearance of overtaxed. Groton is a highly taxed community. We say our mill rate is low, but it's artificially low. We have to get taxes under control. And we're not going to get them under control if we jump, when the, when the state labels us as a distressed community and use that as an excuse to levy a tax that we don't need. I am strongly opposed to this, this measure, and we'll vote against it. Thank you. Oh, and by the way, I agree with Counsel Overy 100%. Thank you.
Counsel Bordelon, you have the floor.
Thank you. First thing is the question for the town manager. The monies that come in from this, can this be set aside even though it's going into the general fund? I feel that money should be used to offset these top nine categories of problems. I don't, I think it's one, I can support the fact that we're taxing it, but I, but I can't support that it just goes into some general fund and it's not using to offset what the intentions were. So I guess what I want to know is how are we going to work towards that goal? What are we doing? How are we going to take that money that's coming in and using it towards these top nine priorities that made us designated part of this list?
Actually, we have the Finance Director on, I'll ask her. Ms. Landry, can we, can we set this aside? I mean, obviously, we could track him, but can we actually set this directly aside in, you know, in a fund and to be determined for usage by the council at a near date? Could the resolution be amended to allow for that?
I'm not sure that this resolution would be amended for that. I think that might be a future one, because I think part of the consideration is that is how, of the nine categories, how would you be able to use this fund to fight per-capita income or to, I think there's, it needs to be another discussion. But if your question is could the money be set aside, the council could set a resolution to set whatever money aside, but I believe it would have to be at the end of the fiscal year when we would know what that dollar amount actually is.
Okay, thank you for answering.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you. I think it would be great to have a meeting and discussion should this go through, whatever council is up here at that time, and making sure that these funds are going, if a passed, to exactly what the problem, top nine areas are that put us ranked 19 out of the top 25 of 169. Outside the box, one starts to think, when I see education and not having high school diplomas, I'm concerned and looking at ways that we can close that. As one councillor stated tonight, we have a lot of lower-income housing and we carry the burden. I do not see that as a burden in our town. I see that as an honor. I see that as a, an obligation to a town to represent our uniqueness in our town, and that's what makes us Groton, is that we, we have every pay grade, every level of income. And that's the type of community that I wanted to raise my children in, and that's why I'm here. So that's an honor, and that should be respected. So I think to run from that and be afraid of what the numbers are saying does us no good. We should be taking these numbers and looking at them and respecting that there is a problem, not trying to run from the problem, hide from the problem, and not address it because we're worried about the labeling of the problem. The label is there, it's not going away. It's what we do with that label moving forward, the next council or whoever returns and, and the town staff. So, John, I encourage this council and I encourage this town, this town staff to have a meeting, set it aside, let's plan it now, what that would look like and what we should be doing to put this money aside should this pass. And collaborating with our school district and our low-income sectors. Thank you.
Mr. Burt?
I'm just going to say, I'm sure we can find out the rankings from the state as well as some of the other questions I've written down that have been asked. But, you know, and if we're number five, being worse than one, that might guide you some, you know, on certain items that are worse than others. So I'll see what I can, I'm sure the state will provide that. I'll get back to the council soon as I get that.
A point of clarification, Madam Mayor. It also would be helpful out of the nine to know exactly which one was our lowest ranked out of the nine.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to try to find.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Counsel Baumgardner, for your second time?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and very well-articulated Counsel Bordelon. You know, I too will be supporting this resolution this evening, and thank you, Director Landry, for clarifying the process. I share Counsel Bordelon's sentiments that, you know, we're addressing the very problem that enables this essentially new, new fee that we can levy. Again, this is a tax, it's not a tax on just anybody, it's purely a tax on property, real estate property transactions over $2,000. So if you're buying a home for $300,000 in Groton, this represents, I think, about $750 you would be contributing to the town of Groton in that real estate transaction. And certainly, you know, I think if you have the capacity to purchase a home, that's really, I think, peanuts you're contributing to the town in the scheme of things. So those dollars can certainly, you know, go towards multiple, you know, an array of programs. But again, you know, we don't blink an eye when we're leveraging higher, you know, higher reimbursements for our schools. We get those, you know, to build our new schools. We get higher reimbursement rates than some of our surrounding municipalities because of the fact that we are a diverse population, that we have an array of students that come from, you know, multiracial homes and multi-income home, you know, multi-high-income neighborhoods. And that is something to celebrate. That's what makes Groton so unique. So, you know, we, we just have to be careful about, you know, I'll leave it there. But, you know, one question I would like an answer on in, I think, a future documentation would be what the combined rate with the state, the state tax and the, the combined rate of the state tax and the local tax levy for real estate conveyance? I know it can range depending on the municipality of what the total percentage of the conveyance rate is that's applied to the real estate transaction. So do you have those numbers at all, Clerk McCaslin, because I know you, you collect that with, after every real estate transaction?
Yeah, yeah, there's a, there's a, so a house is sold that has a value up to, so this is property. Unapproved property has a different .10, excuse me, 125% of 1%. And that's, and then property that's up to $800,000 in value and then has a, has a .50, so a half of a percent. And then anything over $800,000 up to 2.5 million has 1.25. And then over 2.5 million is 2.5.
Thank you.
Those are the advances that the state gets. The towns never change. The town events never change unless you get designated as a, as a...
And what's that? What is? What is that rate? If you know offhand, do you know offhand the rate?
Pardon me?
The fixed rate for the fixed rate levy to the town?
For the town is .25.
.25, okay.
Yeah, .25 of 1%. So it's not, you do understand that, right?
And that's what every, every, if there's a real estate transaction that happens in any of the 169 towns, they're paying at least 0.25%.
Every town, yes.
Okay, got it.
That's, that's everyone's, those, those fees that I just mentioned are statewide. The 1.25, 2 million, 1.52 million, that's a new one as of 2020, July 1st.
Got it.
There wasn't a distinction of the dollar value. You know, that's something else. You know, our prices of homes are going up astronomically, I think. You know, something that three years ago you could buy for under $200,000, now it's over $250,000. So I don't know. Weird.
Thank you.
And just, Mr. Burt, just to clarify, this is paid by the seller of the real property, correct?
Yes.
Not the general population?
Correct.
Thank you. All right.
A point of clarification, I just want to make sure on the record, when would this resolution have to be presented and finalized before the council to earmark this money to maybe go into workforce readiness or whatever area?
So what Mr. Burt had said was that, or actually what Director Landry said, was at the end of the fiscal year, when we knew the dollar amount, is when the current council, not the current council, the council, the future council, would have the ability to sit and make a resolution as to what they wanted to do, if anything in particular with that, with that sum of money. Okay, so everybody has spoken twice. Counsel Overy, is that a new hand? We need consensus to have you speak for a third time. Is that a new hand?
I don't think I used all my time before, but yes, it's a new hand.
Is there consensus from the council to give a third, a third round?
Yes.
One, two, three, four. That's four. Okay, there's, there's, I'm sorry, there's not consensus, Counsel Overy. Okay, so then...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Point of order. I didn't have all my time before.
Counsel Overy?
You didn't have to tell me my time was up. I still have time to speak.
Counsel Overy, the rules are two turns per councillor?
I didn't finish a second turn. I didn't finish a first turn.
Counsel Overy?
I don't need to ask for a third turn.
We don't, we don't measure portions of turns. We always do just, you spoke once and then you yielded the floor. If there's a fifth councillor who would be willing to give a third round, as we often give to other people? There's...
Thank you, guys. Thanks a lot.
One, two, three, four.
I agree to give you a longer time.
Okay, we have five. We have Counsel Baumgardner, Franco, Granatoski, Melendez, and Zepary. So Counsel Overy, you have the floor?
All I wanted to say was I think it might be a good idea if we were to have some sort of a discussion with our Economic Development Department as to how they feel this, this distressed community might affect what they're trying to do. I doubt that there's been any conversation with that department, and I think it should be part of our future conversations. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Counsel Franco, you have the floor for your second time on this.
So I would also be in favor of hearing from Economic Development. Are they on the line tonight?
John's been monitoring John Ryan, the director. I don't know if he's on yet, if he's just listening.
I don't, I don't, I can't see the participants, so I'm not sure.
I would be in favor of hearing from them as well as to what their thoughts are on these matters, because there are many things on this list that they've been giving us glowing reviews about, so it's sort of surprising tonight. I am not in favor of adding this tax if we're considered a distressed community, and I think $750 when you're selling a home is a lot of money, because I have sold homes. And when you sell a home, it's unbelievable... And when you sell a home, it's unbelievable the amount of fees and amount of things you have to pay for when you sell your home. And the responsibility is on usually the seller to make all, you know, to pay for majority of everything. So when you sell a home, automatically, the norm is 6 percent to a realtor. So on a $300,000 home, you're looking probably, what, like $18,000? So I mean, and then that's, and then you have attorney fees, and you have title things, and you have, there's so many things. And I'm telling you, it's, I just think that to put another burden on a seller, I just don't think that's, and we're not sitting here as a community saying, my gosh, we're scraping the bottom of the barrel and we don't have any money to do anything. No, we're increasing our fund balance, and we have additional money over the 20 percent. So I don't, I don't understand what you would be taking this money, putting it into an account. We are considered a distressed community regardless if we like it or not, and there will be benefits that, from the state, that we can probably receive and grants and other things of that nature. But I don't think taxing our residents is the right way to go on this. And I haven't heard any kind of argument that would persuade me to do anything different. And unless Town Manager Burt has any kind of comments to persuade in any sense that would be in favor of adding an additional tax on people, I don't know, I don't think I'm in favor of this at all.
Mr. Reiner is on the line. I'm not sure, you know, some of it, I'll probably have to go back and do research on, but he is available.
Mr. Reiner, can you hear me? I can't, I don't have any access to it, so I can't see if he's there, if he can hear or not. Mr. Reiner?
Yes, good evening.
Hi, thank you for joining us. I know this wasn't your item. Counselor Franco had a question for you, and Counselor Obray as well. Counselor Franco, did you wish to voice your question so Mr. Reiner could hear it again?
Well.
I've actually been listening to the meeting.
Oh, excellent, thank you. Let me just jump in for one second. Counselor Parker is with us now, so thank you. It is 7:29.
Okay, so again, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. So there are some benefits that we do attain from being a distressed community. We are, in some grants, we get higher points, and we're eligible for additional funding through those. I don't have the entire list of the benefits of being a distressed community. I do agree with some of the sentiment that's been expressed tonight about the negative connotation that could come across of Groton being a distressed community, but it also does have other fiscal benefits for us that we don't necessarily have to do much for to be eligible for some of those programs, such as some of the grants that are out there. Happy to have my staff do a little bit of research, looking at all of the benefits that would pass down to us from a planning, economic, community development, et cetera, benefit as it relates to distressed communities, if people would like us to do that.
Yes, I would like you to do that. I would like more information on that.
So.
Okay, can do.
Right now, we have a motion on the floor. We can go two ways with, oh, Counselor Melendez wishes to speak. Counselor Melendez, I'm sorry, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'll just take a, try and take a crack at answering Counselor Franco's question. I think the idea behind the tax is that levying it on the person who's selling the house, theoretically, $750 on the $300,000 home sale would be leaving the town. Theoretically, the person would sell the home in Groton and move somewhere else, whereas if you could levy that tax and you could use it for people who currently live in the town. So I think that's the idea behind putting the tax on the seller of the home rather than the buyer of the home. So that's just what I wanted to say.
Just if I can respond.
You don't have any time left, I'm sorry.
Well, he directed his comments to me.
Let me, let me say what I was gonna say. So at this point, we have a motion on the floor. One of two things can happen. We can move it to a vote, or someone could move to refer it back to Committee of the Whole. If you would like more information, if there are enough of you that would like more information, then I would suggest you make that motion rather than just letting it fail.
Just a question.
Mr. Burt?
We're in Committee of the Whole, would you not just postpone it, or?
We could, that's right, we are in Committee of the Whole. We're not in council yet. Yeah, we could just leave it here and address that at our next meeting, or whatever meeting Mr. Reiner and the Madam Clerk could be ready to talk about it. So you could ask that we postpone this if you like, and if we get consensus to postpone it, we can do that. Otherwise, we will.
I'll make a motion to postpone.
To a time definite, please.
One would be a good time.
Pick a cow. So our next cow is, I gotta look.
The next week in the packet's already done, so it would probably be the 26th.
26th of October.
And we do have other planning items that night, so it probably works out well.
Okay, make a motion to postpone till October 26th?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor to postpone this item to October 26th. That will still work, I think, with the timeline that's in this original motion? Correct? Because this is November 1st.
If you did a special council meeting that night, yes.
Right, so that would work. So.
Is there a deadline, then?
No, she just asked the question if it would fit the original timeline in November 1st.
The way the resolution was written.
There is no set timeline.
Because November 1st put in. So simple majority, I assume.
I think part of the reason for doing November 1st was for the clerk to have time to get that information out to the title companies, so she, you know, she might want to push that out further, so I'd give it up to her to answer.
So that right now, there's a motion on the floor to postpone till the August 26th, August 26th, October 26th cow. All those in favor?
Madam Mayor, I had a point of clarification with that.
What is your point of clarification?
You had stated that the economic development would be present, is that correct, in addition with this, and any other information?
That was the request, yes.
Okay, so I think with that request, I think it's only fair, if that's the motion, I think it's fair to consider other avenues that are on this target list of nine, not just the economic development standpoint of the criteria of this designation. I think it'd be appropriate to make sure we have someone that's present from the schools and someone from workforce readiness, talking about our high school, you know, people, folks in our community that are not reaching high school diplomas. I would like some numbers from that. And just all of these areas that we could, so I'm looking at our school board, I'm looking at workforce readiness, human resource department. I think it's really important, because if we're looking at a possible resolution down the road of where this money would go, we should have not just economic development present.
Mr. Burt?
I'm not able to guarantee all that by the 26th.
Right.
Plus, I don't have control over some of those agencies. We may have to wait till a later date.
Yes.
At least our town representation.
So right now, the motion is for the 26th of October.
I'm sorry to bother you about this, but parliamentary procedure, this is an item on cow. It will remain on cow, you know, as old business, you know, it'll just stay on your cow. Every town meeting, it should pop up if you don't.
So you don't think we need to vote on this, Madam Clerk? There's a motion on the, so.
I realize, I'm asking about parliamentary procedure. Whether you need to have a motion on the floor to postpone something that's already on your addenda.
So I'm asking a question of the clerk, then. We have the main motion on the floor, and then there was a motion to postpone this to a different cow. Are you saying we should withdraw the motion to postpone and just not act on this main motion?
That's my suggestion.
That is your suggestion, to withdraw the?
Unless people want, you put it to a vote, if people don't, if they want to postpone it, they will vote no.
That's, that's what we were going to do.
Or they'll stay, those things. Actually, you know, maybe I'll withdraw my question. I think that there's no way around it to consensus vote or to postpone it. I would, I just think if you put a time definite, we may have everything for you tomorrow.
Yes, but I understand what you're saying, yes. We're gonna leave the motion to postpone on the floor as it is, and we're gonna vote on the motion to postpone. So all those in favor of postponing this item to, let me write that down, October 26th cow, please raise your hand. Parker, Franco, Obray, Zepari, and those opposed, please raise your hand. Baumgartner, Bordelon, Melendez, Granatoski. Counselor Heed, are you with us? I can't see if he is or not.
I'm opposed.
Opposed?
I'll be an A.
Thank you. And then there are zero abstentions. So the motion to postpone fails. Four in favor, five opposed, zero abstentions. So there's no motion to postpone on the floor. So then the only one who hasn't spoken to this is Counselor, actually Counselor Parker and Counselor Heed. Do either of you wish to speak to this item? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Move to a vote.
Okay, we will vote on 2021-706 conveyance tax. I'm gonna ask for hands, please. All those in favor, please say, or please raise your hand. Baumgartner, Bordelon, Melendez, Granatoski. Anybody at home voting in the affirmative? All those opposed, please raise your hand. Franco, Obray, Zepari. Any abstentions? Counselor Parker. Counselor Heed, how are you voting on this item, please?
I was opposed.
So that motion fails. Four in favor, four opposed, one abstention. Okay. So we don't do anything with this item tonight. So in effect, then it'll stay on the list.
Is, what are the rules for when an item fails in the council rules? Not only for when it's on a town council meeting?
Council or is that on cow?
It can't be taken up for a year now.
I think it's.
Six months.
I will yield to Counselor.
I don't have mine.
We have two of our rules committee here.
Look at the rules.
Please, thank you.
Well, regardless, we can't, there's nothing we can do right now.
As a matter of order, I don't think you can bring it, if it fails, you can't bring it back for a year.
Counselor Zepari, that's what we're looking at right now?
There is a rule where it says majority, whoever.
Not after 60 days, we refer to the cow. Okay, regardless, we can't do anything right at this point. So let's move to the next item, and then we could figure that out, what's gonna happen with that particular item. Mr. Burt, do you have Superintendent Austin with us?
I'm not able to see the screen, I'm hoping.
She's not there, and I can't see.
I am here.
Oh, hi, thank you so much.
Hi.
We, I apologize, we can't see the list of participants to know who's out there, so. All right, so Counselor Parker, if you, let's see, do we have a motion? We do have a motion for 2021-707 Groton Public Schools DODIA grant. This is on page seven and eight of your packet, of the cow packet.
Make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the Department of Defense Education Activity DODIA Military Connected Academic and Support Programs, M-CASP, 2021 Educational Resources Grants in the Amount of $750,000, and to refer the item to the representative town meeting using the expedited 6.5.3 process. I so move.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Franco. Thank you, Superintendent Austin. Would you like to introduce this to the council and the public, please?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
I'm also here with Shannon Weigle, who is our grants coordinator. So if we could unmute her, because she may have a couple words. She's been instrumental in working with me, working with the board for the past five, this is the fifth DODIA grant we've received since 2014, and in the amount of between $750,000 to 1.25 million for each of these grants. So we're really pleased about this one. It's a really good segue to some of the things you were just talking about. You often hear the words college and career-ready, and that's certainly true with what we do in school, from the time they join us in pre-pat, all the way through 12th grade. But the goal of this grant, I think, really stands out, because in this grant that we call Pathways to Success, preparing military students for careers in health science and STEM, it is really a grant for all the students in Groton. Each of our DODIAS, while the focus might be from Department of Defense on military students, every single one of our grants have been used on each and every student here in Groton. And we do collect data around seeing how the military students are doing, but we collect data for all of our students to see how all of our subgroups are doing. So we look to see if these grants are making a difference as part of the evaluation process. And we've been very, very successful with that. In this particular grant, we're looking to improve post-secondary success and graduation rates. And a lot of what we do in the elementary and through the middle school really shows a trajectory of success. So those kids who are successful in eighth grade really prove to be successful through high school. So it's really important to us, early intervention, early childhood, hence our deep connection with Children First Groton and through those elementary years. One of the things you talked about was workforce readiness. And when I think about college and career-ready, I'm thinking about kids finding out what they love to do and what they're really good at, finding that pathway, and finding that work that's gonna really drive them and give them purpose in life. So I know that sounds like it's the educator in me, the teacher in me, but I truly believe that. And, you know, kids take different pathways. We have so many wonderful opportunities here with, you know, being able to have kids go into the workforce, go into manufacturing, go into so many different pathways. And so in this grant, DODIA really is looking to help support Groton Public Schools with the K-12 Career Pathway Program. And it really involves a lot of teacher professional development, what we call externships. And we actually got to visit the Navy Base to see some different health, you know, research centers, and how teachers can go to these research centers and learn about the workplace and that work, so that they can then bring it back to the students. That's what we call an externship. We also will look for student internships, which. And be able to get real-life world experience, which I think is sorely missing sometimes. And I think that's really something, when we talk about engaging kids, we need them to understand what is that work that gets done, and why are they learning algebra, and what are those problems they can solve? So we want to enrich our elementary and middle school science curriculum and interdisciplinary units. You know, we do have middle years program, and with the middle years International Baccalaureate Program, we do a lot of interdisciplinary work. So a big piece of this grant is to help support our teachers with professional development in reading and writing across all curricular areas. So really making our kids literate in the sciences and math, and it's a different kind of reading that goes on, post-reading that goes on, when you are doing that problem-solving in the science and math, and even social studies. So we're really expanding. I had told the teachers this year that we're gonna go in-depth with those initiatives that we've already begun, we're not starting new initiatives, and this grant really proves to do that, in taking some of those good things we're doing, providing some additional opportunities for our teachers in their learning, and also in our students with their learning, and connecting it to the real world. Interestingly, this can go all the way down to elementary school. So reading across the different curriculum and writing across the different curricular areas in elementary, but also understanding careers. If you remember, some of us in our kindergarten, first grade days, we'd go visit the post office, the firehouse, the police station, and that still does go on. But I think that it ends after kindergarten and first grade. But we really want kids to understand different careers, you know, around our area and around the world. So that will be part of this as well, that education. So we're looking for vertical integration at the middle school and elementary with this pathway of progress. As you know, Groton Middle School has multiple pathways, being a stain middle school. So really, when we magnetize, came as stain middle school. So our children in middle school can take project leads away, just like they can in the high school. They have lots of opportunities for that. Robotics, engineering, broadcasting. They have a green screen, and, you know, they have a black box theater. So the performing arts and all the arts are really rich. They have the fitness center. So they have pathways built in in the middle school as well. And we really want to make sure that we're communicating that to the public. We want the kids to understand through their counselors, we want them to know. We want them to know that there's all these different avenues and that they have some choice in determining some of the subjects and electives that they can take. We are, because we are now at five elementary intra-district magnet school in the elementaries, each has a different theme. We have the core solid curriculum foundation, but we have enrichment opportunities during the day, before and after school, along with tutoring. And our kids can see all the different pathways, starting as early as pre-k. So, you know, I, I think the thing that I'm most proud of in this grant is it, like the math grant, it's a K-12 grant. We partner with a lot of our local partnerships, whether it's NESS or Project O. We do the Food Corps and Bon To School, as you know. We are really enriching those NGSS standards, which are the next-generation science standards, while doing some wonderful, um, real-world work and research. I know that the Thames River Magnet students were going with NESS to explore different critters that they could find, and they were collecting them, and they're making terrariums and aquariums. So that kind of experience sticks with the child. You know, an elementary child, a middle school child, they don't forget those things that they're really engaged in. So I would say, really, all in all, the, we believe that this will improve student learning. It will engage students even better. We'll be leaning in to those teachers' instructional practices, looking at reading and writing across curricular areas. We partner with NC-3T, which is the high school manufacturing program that many schools have across the state. And we'll use that $750,000 over five years for K through 12. We are not expecting to use any board money or any town money. And like all of our grants, we do sustain them because they are very rich in professional learning, and are, it's almost like Train the Trainers. Our teachers get trained, and then they train one another. We have some coordination happening, sixth through 12. So leadership, teacher leadership, that also is very responsible for passing this on to new teachers. And, you know, we are able to make sure that it's not only for military children, but for all children. Utilizing some Title I funds as well, so that we can, you know, make sure that all kids have access to these programs. So that kind of gives you an overview. But Shannon is here, too. If she would like to say something additionally, Shannon, did I miss something?
So hello, councilors.
Hello, thank you for joining us.
Hopefully, everybody can hear me.
Yes, thank you.
So, yeah, I think Susan did a good job describing, you know, everything that's in this grant. I think the most important part of this grant is that it builds on all these, you know, initiatives that we've been focused on over the past five years, many of which were supported by the Department of Defense Education Activity, the previous grants, and also the large magnet school grant that we received through the Department of Ed. So this grant will allow us to continue to work with Teachers College of Columbia University, with our K through eight students, and it'll allow us to really kick off our Career Pathway Program, starting at the high school, and then expanding that down to the elementary and middle school, so that, you know, these kids are, you know, because of these other grants we've received, especially the magnet school grant, they've been exposed to so many, you know, wonderful, uh, new learning techniques, and also, um, local resources. And this grant will enable them to be able to connect that to, like, potential careers, whether, you know, in our region or beyond. And, you know, I just want to say, you know, I just, I think it's so wonderful that we have this opportunity to apply to these DODIA grants, because they are competitive grants, they're very competitive. And, you know, the only reason we're able to do that is because the families who are connected to our military base, you know, choose to enroll their students here in Groton, and we have a large percentage of military students, and that's what makes us eligible for these grants. So, you know, so I guess that's all I have to add. It was a very collaborative process, working on this grant, like all of them are. There were at least, you know, 15 teachers and administrators involved, and we met weekly over several months. And like I said, it builds on, you know, previous initiatives and also aligns with the Board of Ed's strategic plan, the 2017 to 22 strategic plan. So if I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you so much.
I think, too, I would like to just add that the health component gave us 10 extra points, and one of the things in our research we saw was that getting a nursing certification at Fitch High School was a really big deal, but we sometimes had turned students away because, you know, it was always filled, those courses, and, but they could leave Fitch High School with a certification, so talk about workforce-ready. And they could go right into the workforce with that certification. So as we investigated that, and we also learned about things like biomedicine, that we thought, which is a Project Lead the Way course, we thought, really, if we could, especially after COVID, if we can do more to enhance that work, that part of the workforce in healthcare, then we give our kids lots of, lots more opportunities. So we did do that as well. So we're here, Shannon and I, that we can answer any questions, and happy to do so.
Thank you so much for that information. Counselor Aubrey, you have the floor.
I just had a couple quick questions, not necessarily exactly what you're talking about, but since we're talking military, did these awards originally go to the two schools in military housing?
So actually, it's interesting, because now that we've been magnetized at the elementary, all of our schools are considered military schools now. So because of the redistribution and really making our schools so balanced, we really have students from military families or connected families in all of our schools. So originally, I believe, let's say when we had eight schools, about four of them were designated. But with each grant that we've received, we really increased it, and we've never limited it only to the military. We tend to partner military with the non-military school, but now they're all considered part of the military family.
Thank you. And one other question I had, I remember a couple years back, we had a presentation from a group that have, I think it's backpacks prepared for military students that come in during the year, and it would give them what they needed for the class they were going into, the graduate level, they would get them a buddy for helping them get used to things. Do we still have that program?
Yes, it's called Anchored for Life. And we actually, also, the Navy has provided us with military family liaisons, who are social workers in our military schools that the government pays for, and they actually run groups. And, and non-military children can join these groups. So if it's about deployment, or parents working far from home, or, you know, anything that children might have to deal with, they are able to join that group. But those programs have actually, they were launched at Charles Burnham and Mary Morrison, and probably Pleasant Valley, when we had Pleasant Valley. And they continue to go strong. Most of our Mary Morrison children have moved to Thames River, so I know that Jamie Giordano, our principal there, is continuing the Anchored for Life.
Well, I think it's a wonderful program, and I want to thank you very much for keeping it going. It's very important to the military kids.
It really is. It really is.
Thank you.
Thank you. First, I just wanted to thank you for your outreach and support in constantly pursuing grants and opportunities in our town. I'm very proud... As both of my children are, were military dependents, their father has since retired, and my husband is also a product of military, being a military dependent. So we appreciate the community outreach, and I know the military community. I think it is also important, as a person who has benefited from that nursing program you referred to at Fitch High School, it was robust when I graduated in '98, and that was an avenue and an opportunity to get firsthand experience right away at a very young age, and I still remain in that field today. So I appreciate that. I think we do need more outreach. We need more broad actual certifications that students can have upon completion of high school and career and workforce readiness. I'm a firm believer in that, and I also would love to see eventually some of these funds used towards, since we are a robust military community and we seek military grants, it's only important that we consider, like our neighboring town, New London, and the pursuit of funding a ROTC program here at the high school. As a mother of two sons, both wanting to join the military, there has been a disconnect in the town not having the opportunities for folks who want to go ROTC or enlisted. And I think it would be another avenue for males, females, anybody who would be willing to and wanting to join any sector, let it be Navy or Army. So I encourage and hope that, you know, we could start to look at ways to fund that. I know that at other meetings, it was stated that the open enrollment was not available to be partially funded from the program, but the town could self-fund. So I encourage that maybe partially some of these grants in the future, or as more come in, as you guys actively seek them, that we look ways to fund a ROTC program, which would not only give students the opportunity to serve our country, but also prepares them for workforce readiness. But again, I appreciate all of that, and I don't, maybe you have an update on the ROTC program or funding that you guys are using at all?
I actually do. Shannon actually and I were able to get a trip to the Navy Base and go into some of those military research centers, and the two coordinators of the program in New London from JROTC joined us. We had a really robust conversation. We have applied for both the JROTC, and then there's another level of it where we would have to provide funding, should we do it. But the military and the Navy Base said that they could also support us with a lot of the equipments, the uniforms, and those kind of things. So they, they are willing to partner with us to be able to get that started. I'd love to see it start as a club. So that's something we're looking into as well, sooner than later, as we're waiting to get the information back on if we've been accepted or not. So that is absolutely in the works. It started from some of our students. I don't know if you remember, probably when your son was in middle school, they did a survey. And in that student survey, they surveyed all the middle school students and several of the high school, I think ninth and 10th grade at the time, and their findings were that over a third of the students were very much interested in military sciences. So that is definitely something we will be pursuing, and, you know, are very hopeful about. So I don't know, Shannon, if you wanted to mention anything else about that. But of course, I would find a creative way to be able to fund it. It wouldn't come from Operation Hunts.
Yeah, no, I think you explained that well, Susan. Yeah, like Susan said, the Navy Base was very excited about that and wants to support us with that effort. And not only would we have an ROTC program, but we would also have a military science pathway that would include, you know, classes during the day also.
I think one of the things that makes me so proud, when I was Assistant Superintendent and Mike Raniere was the superintendent, and this year at graduation, when we asked our students to stand up if they planned to serve our country, and you see 30 young men and women standing up, I just get goosebumps. I'm a military child myself, as you know, and so there's nothing that makes me more proud as students who can, who want to serve their nation. So it's definitely a high interest here in Groton, and I'd like to see it come to fruition.
Chair, if I have to mention... Thank you, Mrs. Austin. I know back when I was on the RTM Education Committee over four years ago, and we had spoken, and I spoke openly at Public Comment, really pushing for this, and you guys were seeking the volunteer aspect and going and meeting. So it's good to hear that it's coming along, and I hope to see this come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other hands, we will vote on 2021-707 Groton Public Schools DODIA Grant. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with nine councilors. I want to entertain a motion to adjourn the COW.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Bumgardner, seconded by Franco. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. It is 8:02. Councilors, before we do anything, okay, we are adjourned at 8:02. Before we do anything else, we're going to take a five-minute recess, but first, in the rules, Rule 8, Section G, Roman numeral 2. Once a matter has been rejected or decided substantially, a same matter may not be the subject of referral unless the council recommends the referral with six votes in favor. So I would say at our October 12th meeting of the COW, if someone so chooses, they could recommend that for reconsideration, and we would need six affirmative votes at that point. All right, so we are taking a break for five minutes. We'll reconvene at 8:08 to take up the council business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. We have a sign-up sheet here. When you are recognized, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councilors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation, and can respond during the responses to citizens' petition portion of the meeting. And we have three citizens in attendance in the room, and we have, I believe, two citizens attending virtually. So, we'll take the people who are here in person first, if you don't mind. And we have Diana Pearson, followed by Scott Westerveld.
Thank you. My name is Diana Pearson, I'm at 11 Park Place in Mystic, Connecticut. I'm here, first of all, thank you for letting me come and speak, it seems like you have some very important issues on hand, so I'm glad you're able to hear us out for neighborhood concerns. I want to speak to you about an issue that's been at the top of my list in my neighborhood for the past year, because I've lived in Park Place alone for one year. I would like to try and create a transparency between the town and our residents of Park Place for any changes. I want to talk about Park Place in Mystic, it's a tiny little street, it's a dead end, and it ends with a coastal access for visitors. My property abuts it, along with Rita's property, and a lot of our neighbors are closely tied into this tiny little street. And we have had a lot of changes, some positive and some a little scary, that have been going on. And there's a lot of conversation about how our street is going to continue to change in order to have a better access to this coastal property. It is estuary, it's protected, and I just think maybe this is the best place to start to say, hey, what's going on with our little street? I feel like I don't know, I've lost control of it, yet I look out my front door and it's there in front of me. So, I've had all of our residents on our street sign a petition, and we have a very simple request is to create this transparency, and when something is changed for that property, we would like to be notified in writing. It's kind of a simple request. I have it here, I can give a copy to everyone with signatures. I believe that's possible, I believe that can be done. I've talked to John about it before. But also, I just, if there are, I guess I just need to know the town's idea on coastal access. Do we, we have to have coastal access? We live in a beautiful neighborhood, does it have to become a park every time? Does there have to be parking for everyone? Does it have, like, what are, what are the towns' idea of coastal access? Because it does affect people who live right on those borders, right up, abuts the property. And I don't know if anyone can even answer that for me, or I'm kind of here trying to find answers.
That's not the role of us this evening. There's a section where councilors can respond at that point, but right now the floor is yours.
Okay, so, that's why I'm here, and I would love to be able to create the transparency and be able to, hopefully, I was hoping to dispel some of the issues that we have on our street. But I'll start with the transparency, and that's why we're here.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Do you want a copy of my petition?
Yes, please. If you, if you could leave that with Mr. Burton, then he could get it to the clerk, and it will become part of the minutes of the meeting. And if you have the time, I know you've been sitting here for a while, if you could wait till all the other speakers, if you could wait till all the other speakers are done, then councilors may choose to respond.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Scott Westerveld, followed by Tom Olson.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the town council and town staff. My name is Scott Westerveld, and I live at 7 Boulder Court in Mystic, Connecticut. I'm here tonight to continue the efforts of the Mystic Oral School Advocates on behalf of the residents of the town to oppose the proposed development at the Mystic Oral School property. I cannot stress enough that the citizens who are in opposition to the mega-development are exactly that. We are opposed to the size and scope of the proposed development, but not development itself. We embrace development. The proposed development absolutely does not fit, and in no way can be considered reasonable, nor does it fit with the 2016 Plan of Conservation and Development. We respectfully request that this town council extricate-
Could everybody here mute, please? I think that was someone in the Zoom meeting, thank you very much. Go ahead, Mr. Westerveld, I apologize.
That's good. We respectfully request that this town council extricate the town from the developers' agreement. While there are probable hazards with canceling developers' agreement, the hazards, if we continue, are incalculable. I also have to believe that had the process that committed the town to this project been open to the public, we, the town of Groton, would not be facing the hazards I mentioned here. And I hope that as part of an after-action evaluation of how we got here, measures will be put in place to prevent this from ever happening again. Thank you very much for allowing me this forum to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tom Olson?
Tom Olson, 188 Crosswinds Drive, Groton here. I'm also a member of the Town Conservation Commission, and those are, I'd like to address two areas relative to the Conservation Commission. On your agenda tonight, you have an item in regard to the groundfield grant for 1208 Aquatic Road. We've reviewed that and the statements that were made during the last meeting, during the committee of the whole. We concur with the Public Works initiatives, because there were some questions regarding, are we getting all the brownfields addressed? And from the Conservation Commission's, we agree that with Public Works is that this is really the last one that'd be qualified for a grant. The monitoring that's being done at the King property is sufficient, as in accordance with the state guidelines, and likewise with the two town dumps, that monitoring is very aggressive and well in place. So, we recommend that you continue going forward with this as proposed. The other item is not on the agenda, and we were a little distressed that I didn't see it on the list of potential things coming up here, but it's the renaming of, on the King property, the Kalanowski Conservation Area that's on the town GIS. This is a property that, there's a conservation achievement that was part of the middle school trade of properties, and the Groton Conservation Advocates have proposed to the Parks and Recs Commission, and then also to the Conservation Commission, a name change for that to the Sasakus Nature Preserve. And I just want to inform you that the Conservation Commission has supported that, but we haven't seen it come up on your agenda, and we'd like to see that to move forward. Thank you very much. This is the item.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Okay, that's everyone, I think, who is in person. We have two speakers that I saw online. We have Jen Surf. Ms. Surf, are you with us? Ms. Surf?
She's there, she's kind of, there it is.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, could you?
I am muted, can you hear me?
Yes? Could you state?
Yes, we can hear you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes? All right. But there's a, I have the TV in the background, so that was repeating what I was saying. Okay. My name is Genevieve Surf, I live at 6 Pearl Street in Mystic, and I want to address a couple of different things. First of all, I'm glad somebody from the Conservation Commission was here, because I want to commend this council on having been wonderful to the open space and the conservation-minded people in Groton. I think this has probably been the best council in my memory that, I'm not actually involved in these groups anymore, but I observe what they do and what you're doing, and you have been really the best council ever to help us out with conservation issues. If we're becoming a distressed community again, it might become difficult getting all these permissions. Okay, the second thing I'd like to say is, I live on Pearl Street, and I want to commend you again for putting, painting the parking lines on Pearl Street. That has been very helpful, because people were parking all over the place, and now the parking is much more efficient. However, I am unhappy, when I read the traffic report, to see that nobody, none of the residents on this side of the river were included in doing the parking study. And considering, in fact, we're so close to Main Street and all these other parking areas, I think it would really, maybe it's not too late to do it, it would really be good to interview some of the people who live in the residential areas, because it's highly residential, right next to where all these restaurants are, and people are going crazy, trying to park, and speeding, and cutting off people, and all this stuff. And we really need to have some say in there, because, you know, we're losing our quiet neighborhoods because of all of this. So, that's something maybe somebody can make a referral to, is, you know, interview some of the residents here. The other thing I really don't want to happen is to see Pearl Street become one-way. I mean, because, right now, because it's two-way, everybody has to weave in and out very slowly and find slots to, and that slows down the traffic, which is one of the main things, in Europe, for instance, they look for traffic slowing devices like this. On High Street, where the street is wide enough for parking on both sides, some of my friends up there tell me that people go 60 miles an hour on High Street when the bridge is up. If they want to go from Route 1 to 95, or they want to go from Rot Long Point Road to 95, they take High Street and they go 60 miles an hour. Now, my question is, same thing as my friend Bruce, who lives on the Rot Long Point Road, where are the police here? Shouldn't they be giving speeding tickets to people? I see people speeding all over town, and there's no deterrent whatsoever. Now, I heard at one point, I remember when I was on the council, I asked that question, I heard that the state collects all the speeding fees if- ... incentive for our police to give people tickets. But the result is, we have very, very dangerous situations. Allen Street, for instance, people are going at the speed of light, they're going at least 60, if not more. There's no deterrent, and every time you pave a road over, they can go 10 times faster. I would really like for you all to ask the police why they don't actually set up speed traps and for three or four days stop everybody in sight, so that people get the idea that the police will be there at some point, and they can't keep speeding like this. Okay, finally, yeah, I was reminded in New York City, when the dog poop laws changed, I can't remember, it was Mayor Koch, I think, decided to, people had to start picking up their dog poop, and he knew very well that New Yorkers weren't about to start doing that on their own. So, he put the entire police force out on the streets for about a week, giving people tickets-
One minute.
-when they didn't have bags to pick up the dog poop. Believe me, everybody got the idea really fast. If the police did that in Groton for a couple of weeks, you know, stopped people from speeding everywhere, it would be wonderful. Things would slow down, it wouldn't get so crazy here anymore. So, finally, the hard part, with the Mystic Oral School, we've talked a lot about this with the advocates, and one of the big problems that we have is, is the idea that the town attorney, who wrote all these contracts, and therefore has to think these are wonderful contracts, the town attorney really should not be the right, is not the right person to negotiate anything with the developer, Mr. Ressler. I would really like to recommend that you get, you hire a different attorney to do these negotiations, somebody who comes to the whole process with an objective eye, who is not, you know, biased by the work that their own firm has put into it, and try to defend their work. And one more thing about the town attorney-
Your time is up, Ms. Surf.
You councilors have no obligation whatsoever to go under this gag order. There's really nothing that you're discussing in executive session. The only amount of money is the dollar- The only amount of money is the dollar and the TIF money, which hasn't been decided. I don't even think you started to discuss that.
Ms. Surf-
What you're doing, I'm a Democrat-
Ms. Surf-
And what you're doing-
Your time is up, Ms. Surf.
You really are hindering-
Ms. Surf, your time is up.
... the chances of the Democrats in the upcoming election.
Ms. Surf-
Because everybody we've spoken to, people, legal people-
Your time is up, Ms. Surf.
Everyone says that this gag order is absolutely ridiculous.
We have other speakers. Ms. Surf, your time has expired. Thank you very much. The next speaker on the list is Beth Tillman. I believe Beth Tillman is with us this evening? Someone who's controlling-
Yes, I am unmuted, I believe.
There you go. Thank you.
Beth Tillman, 925 River Road, Town of Groton. I am here for two purposes, and one is to ask you to declare Mr. Westler in default and proceed to remove Westler homes from any interest in the Mystic Oral School. Mr. Westler, to date, has done nothing that a very pro-development, developers' agreement has indicated that he must do to stay out of default, and his entire attempts to work with you are spurious and have no merit whatsoever. He has no right or privilege anymore in my eyes, and I would ask that you remove him, please. I also have another very important point to make, and that is that the Planning and Zoning Department, or whatever they're called, economic, whatever they are, Mr. Reiner's Department, they have been sending out RFPs that specifically indicate that there will be no public hearings on the agreements for these schools, which are surplus property. I think it is time that Groton become transparent with all of the taxpayers and stop this nefarious practice. We need to have standard RFPs issued with all procedures clearly delineated, and for all of these properties, we need to have open public meetings so that all of the public may have input into what is going to happen. So, again, discontinue the secret development agreements. It has gotten us into tremendous difficulty with the Mystic Oral School, and it will continue to create nothing but dissatisfaction in the taxpayer base as these projects are announced with absolutely no community input. Thank you for your time, and I hope you have a wonderful rest of your evening.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. Ms. Tillman, I have Mr. Brown on the list next. Is he on the line with you?
Mr. Brown is quite ill, and he could not wait until 8:30 to speak, so I'm sorry. He will not be addressing you.
Thank you. I'm sorry to hear that. Thank you very much. We have another person. I'm not sure if you are on the line or not, but Roseanne Katuski, are you on the line?
She had actually indicated, Madam Mayor, that she could not speak this evening.
Thank you very much, Madam Court.
I sent a message to the downtown manager near you, but that was earlier, so I'm sorry.
Thank you. I always like to be sure that no one else is on the line there. Is there anyone else in the room here that wanted to speak? Okay, very good. Thank you. So, we are on to Roman numeral six, responses to citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Are there any counselors with responses? Counselor Baumgartner?
Thank you. I'll start with Mr. Olson's comments. Thank you for coming out this evening. I read a correspondence from, I believe, the Conservation Commission regarding this, the proposed name change, and couldn't agree more, honoring a hero of our land, an original chief of the Machitacque Pequot tribe, if I'm not mistaken, that lived on the land long before we did. And certainly, you know, looking around at our several, various open spaces, it is abundantly clear that those names do not reflect the Our First People and the folks who, again, were stewards of the land and were decimated from the land long before we arrived. So, thank you for ushering those discussions and the leadership of, I believe, Parks and Recreation Director for commencing those discussions with the tribe. And now also that we will be purchasing the Watcher's property, I think we should also engage the tribes on potential name change there as well. Additionally, with respect to coastal access, vehemently in support of coastal access and preserving the coastal access that we do have, obviously, we should always be cognizant of the needs of the existing neighborhood. But with that said, anywhere where there is access, we ought to keep it as such. I am very familiar with Park Place and that. A resident, I know Alice Foley, has been corresponding with her for several years about how to best accommodate folks who are interested in that coastal access. And so, I support, you know, continuing and growing upon that, and would certainly love to hear a little bit more what your specific concerns are. With respect to the development agreement, I too would recognize that it is long past time that our council begins vocalizing that, yes, the developer is in default of this developer agreement. Therefore, this council ought to take steps to remove ourselves from that agreement as soon as possible. This hasn't been mentioned, and I haven't mentioned this, but, you know, when we approved the agreement, we had no knowledge that we approved an agreement and engaged in an agreement with someone who pled guilty to four counts of fifth-degree conspiracy. Now, if any one of us at all, ever, worked with the municipality, refrained from disclosing that information to that municipality and was still was in that agreement, you know, and we, you know, that's just, it's beyond me. So, I think any steps our council can collectively take to begin those process, that process is incredibly important. I think it's abundantly clear the public has spoken loud and clearly about removing ourselves from this. I absolutely respect the fact that we, our town is doing due diligence to, on, you know, but I'd like to see some more due diligence to remove ourselves as soon as possible. So, I think we ought, I wanted to vocalize that, and nothing further to say. Thank you.
Mr. Burt, wanted to jump in?
On the name change, the council has been receiving information on that, and Counselor Heath's been involved with the name change. Mr. Olson, just a question. Has that gone, has the planning, the Parks and Recreation Commission actually made the recommendation yet?
This is where I'm unfamiliar with how that processes and how they would get it to you guys.
Well, as soon as that's passed, Mark Berry, the Parks and Recreation Director, will just create an agenda item, and it'll just come on the next available agenda. So, as soon as they do their recommendation, it'll come straight to you guys.
I thought it was still there, too. I wasn't that sure then.
Yeah, I don't think they've, I didn't think they voted on it yet, so. And I have been sending information out to the council on that. And Ms. Surf on High Street, and, you know, we, it's hard to remember which, we do a lot of these traffic things where we, where we sit out there for a week and ticket and things. That's actually something we do very commonly. However, you know, we move from place to place. I'm trying to think, High Street came up recently. I'm trying to think if that's one where we just said we were going to do something at, but I'll double-check with the, is he, is he coming yet, please?
Chief is here right now.
Is that, you want to come up here for a second?
Chief Asaro has dropped us.
We do so much of that. We get regular requests at every-
How convenient.
-traffic authority meeting.
Thank you, Chief, for coming up.
I'm trying to think, was that one of the ones we were going to put the signage out at?
We've done traffic studies before and done enforcement. I don't, I don't specifically recall the dates of when we did it, but I know we've done it. We've had people out there all the time.
Yeah, but we can, we'll bring up with the traffic, the next traffic authority. We'll do another round along there and do a speed trap, I don't want to call it a speed trap, but we'll monitor it for a week.
Thank you.
One thing that we would like for another, just a future thing, is people are constantly requesting, you know, the sign, the electronic sign showing the speed. Those are about how much each?
Yeah, they're not cheap. They're several thousand dollars. We've got a couple of them now, but-
Yeah, we need a lot more of those. So, something will be asked, might plan to ask for the next budget cycle, because that does help with the traffic, with the speeding. So, we will, if you can add that to the next traffic authority meeting for that. And then just to mention Park Place, as you remember, not a lot's been done there yet. We put the, remember, we put the sign inch up, and then somebody took it, so we put heavier-duty signage up at the end of Park Place for coastal access, which has remained. So, it was apparently heavy-duty enough. There's a sign, people are parking, blocking driveways, so there is a sign that just says "Don't block driveways" because people, there's public parking along there, there's nothing prohibiting it, but it is very narrow. And then there's a bench there, which the council is aware of, but I know there's other ideas that a neighbor has brought up, but there's been no, nothing going on with that at this point. But I will, I mean, I've been in contact with the neighbors, and I give, I'll definitely let you know if anything at all comes up on anything. And feel free to reach out to me at any point, which you do anyway, so.
And if you would, if the petition could be sent to the-
Yeah, I'll send a copy to everybody.
-council, please. That way, we could take a look at it. And we have, we have Ms. Pearson's address here. If you would like to send an email to council@grotoncht.gov, then counselors could reply to you if we have questions, once we have a chance to look at the petition. If that would be acceptable? Thank you. Are there other counselors who wish to respond? Counselor Franco?
I'm familiar also with Park Place, and I think it's a very narrow road, and I'm not actually sure how people can actually park down there and, like, possibly use the boat launch, and then where do they, I just, I really have a hard time figuring out how this all works, where somebody might put a kayak in the water there, and then where do they put their car? Because literally, I don't see anywhere-
It's very narrow. I know.
Anywhere to park on that street.
And people do park on it because it is public parking. You'd have to turn around in a driveway, is essentially what you'd have to do. There's not room to, at the end of the street there, you know, the street dead ends right into our coastal access there.
Right.
Like, when I park there, go down to do anything there, like, see the, talk to the neighbors, I park at the end of the block just because that's easier, so I don't tie up things. But people are perfectly available to park there. But it is narrow.
So, I, I mean, I don't know how this all works. I mean, I want to keep the public access, of course. I think that's important, but I'm wondering if there's anything we can do with that road with the public, or even for allowing the neighbors to always have information when anything comes up on that road. I know we have scenic roads that are designated scenic roads, and I don't know if there's any other designation we can give to a road that every time we do something on the road, the neighbors are notified as a public hearing.
You know, we're really just talking bench and a couple of signs. That would really wouldn't, you know, flagged by something like an ordinance. Now, if we looked at widening the road, which we're not, just, just say, that's the idea that's come up in the neighborhood.
Well, I don't know what else they're talking about, and I'd be very interested to find out what they're talking about when they said that the town has more things that they're looking to do on their road, and I'm not exactly-
We're not looking at anything else, but it's not the town looking at anything.
It's not the town?
No.
Okay. When it comes to Mystic Oral School, I'd like to respond to that as well. I would love to just publicly say what I feel. I would absolutely take a huge burden off of me, but I'm listening to the advice of the attorneys. And right now, our town is supposed to be in good faith efforts in mediation with the developer. I have faith that our attorneys and Mr. Burt are doing what they can and what is right and things that have been discussed with us in executive session. So, we are aware of how this is working, and I think by saying certain things publicly, I think it would put the town in jeopardy and a lot of liability, and I, it's, you just, we just have to have patience. And I know it's been a long time, but like, as we know, there's many things that happen in government that take much longer, way longer than we all think it should. But that's just the process, and we don't always like that, but there is a process happening, and we are, I feel like it's being worked on properly at this time, so, thank you.
Counselor Fordland?
Thank you. Thank you so much for everyone who took the time to come out and speak tonight. I think it's very important to allow for community members to come out, constituents, and speak on behalf of their town. I think it's the most important part of our meetings, and unfortunately, it is only once a month, so it's very hard, and I commend you for doing such and taking that time. With that, I am in full support of coastal access. Growing up on High Street, I know exactly the road you speak of, and it's always been quite narrow. I remember going down there with my little blow-up thing and sailing myself out from down there as a kid, and it's kind of looked very mushy at the beginning part, and so it's great. It's an opportunity that I didn't have. I never, you know, had a house that was on the water, but I appreciated its ability to go there. And I remember some of the neighbors there, Mrs. Foley's been there as far as I can remember, and some of the other neighbors that have come and gone over the years, and they would always, you know, be very welcoming, and so it is definitely a concern as far as parking goes. I never paid attention to it that fully as I was able, I was able to walk down there, but I do think it is definitely something to look at. I'm going to ask the town manager to also send me maybe a map to see how much the town owns around that space. It would just be nice to project to see, like, what that area looks like, and if it is, maybe there's a way that someone could turn around, you know, if they dropped their kayak or their float or something, and then they wouldn't have to turn around in someone's driveway. So, it'd be good to know exactly what the perimeters look like there, to just kind of fully assess what we're looking at, because, you know, I can understand that it could be bothersome to have people turning constantly in the driveway. So, it'd be great to look at that. So, I'll send that in an email.
I actually had sent that out a few weeks ago to the council, but I'll make it up to resend it.
Okay, I don't know if I have it. Just to see how many feet on either side, you know, around there. I do also agree with Mr. Olson about the name, so that's great to hear that you stated that that will come forward. I also do agree with Counselor Baumgartner, along with the other property, looking at ways to possibly change that as well. As far as the brownfields go, I know John, I'm still waiting to hear, like, what the contamination is at the King's property. I'd like to, I know that it's contained and controlled and monitored. I'd just like to know what we're doing to monitor it and how it's being contained. Some more information on that would be great. As far as the speeding, I must say, as we've obviously noticed, no one's oblivious, that people are out campaigning and knocking doors on both sides of the party and primary and general election. And I have experienced the speeding on Pearl Street, High Street, and it has been, even on Allen Street even, so, and that's a large complaint that I'm hearing when I'm out there. So, it definitely is something we should look at. It's important to, you know, appreciate the tapestry and people coming in, but we've got to find a way to regulate, right? Smart, responsible growth and management, so. As a person who worked in the shops downtown Mystic as a kid, I remember listening to some of the owners express concerns about the cost of rent, and now we have so many people coming in, so it's a great problem to have, but we have to move towards finding ways to work with that. In response to the Mystic Oral School, I still stand openly out. I'm for responsible, reasonable, and environmentally friendly development that supports the tapestry of the local area, the areas that were discussed tonight that have traffic, that would only intensify with that number that Westler is opposing, proposing. Based on the thing that I thought I agreed on, when I first came onto this council, this was already in the process, and what I agreed on was at the time that this was something, not knowing that their background was as such as presented. So, I feel it's in my right to pull my name, which I have as a constituent, taxpayer, and as an elected official, because I feel that what the attorneys are stating, we are going to have trouble either way. The due diligence hasn't been done. I think the nine-member council should have been part of that RFP per process, as well as selecting the preferred developers. We should see the top three developers before the council, not just the preferred developer. And now, here we are, I was not able to ask those questions, but I felt I should have been able to, and now we find out more about the background of the development. I can respect what some people had stated tonight. Maybe we do need a different attorney to look at it. It's such a controversial issue with a lot of feelings and emotions in this town. And John Burt, is there a way that we could look at ways to bring in a different attorney for advice on the outside on this?
Well, I'd already asked a- Well, I'd already asked the two outside attorneys to look at the development agreement for one. And I will say, that's a standard development agreement. It's not poorly written. I know people would like it to be stronger, but it has to be balanced. So, I reject any comments to the contrary. It's being handled appropriately. They have to, our attorneys have to, has to represent us in court. I have had other attorneys looking at this and we're, we're on the right track. And I am trying to be aggressive. I have been, I want to get this resolved myself, so.
And I think it would be a strong effort to move towards making sure these RFP and development agreements come before the council so that we can review them in entirety as an item. And making sure that the process currently, where only two councilors attend and bring the preferred developer forward, really doesn't represent the nine-member body. And that was something that was decided upon this council when I arrived. And I did question that at the time. And it was stated that these were selected and it was Councilor O'Bree and Councilor Heed. So, how do we look at restructuring that, then?
So, on October 12th, we have the excess property sale process scheduled for the agenda. That's still on, Mr. Burt?
Yes, and it's been mentioned here many times, that that would be the date.
So, that will be, that is upcoming and that will be our chance to chime in and make any suggestions for changes that the council sees fit. We have other councilors that want to respond?
Perfect. I just wanted to say that, again, I know the manager just stated it was a poor develop, I'm not stating that. That's your words. What I stated was, we were not part of the process. Therefore, there could be things added that, like background checks, should be part of that process to make it stronger. Thank you.
Council Heed, response to citizens' petition, sir? I can't unmute.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, just in response to Tom Olson, we did receive word from Ashland Tuck at Pequot for a recommendation on the name. So, he is right, that was received, but it hasn't been voted on by Parks and Rec, not to my knowledge, anyway. So, but it'll be good to finally get that taken care of. And I really appreciate Councilor Baumgartner's suggestion that we reach out to also do the same with the Wachrus property. I believe we're calling it the Wolf property to get a name. And this is why my camera's usually. So, sorry, I was distracted there. Because we haven't bought the property yet and it can take them somewhat, some bit of time to do the research and come up with a good suggestion for it. So, getting started on that now would definitely be a good idea. So, I also want to respond to concerns about the Mystic Oral School. First of all, I have also heard from other attorneys that we do not need to consider ourselves to be gagged. However, our town attorney still recommends to us that we do this. I'm not opposed to the idea of getting, either changing attorneys or getting a second official opinion on that. In fact, I think it would probably be advisable to get that done at some point soon. But all that being said, clearly, I think everybody on the council is disappointed in the way things have sort of come about through this process. The new information that's come to light recently, not to mention, there's been a couple of years where they could have gotten out ahead of this and done a lot more community engagement and it just hasn't happened. And I think that's why we issued the default agreement, the agreement letter. So, all that being said, I just also want to put some perspective here. This is a state-owned property. So, our agreement is, it's contingent upon the state selling the property and going forward towards development. There is no sale of the property. The contract with the state won't expire until next year. This issue won't really go away, unfortunately. We'll have to go through the, the process that's, that we're now engaged in until this, until that gets resolved and until the contract with the state either expires or gets renewed. Whatever the state does with the property, we may not have direct control over that, but we still have planning and zoning and we have, you know, obviously excellent community involvement. And nothing bad is going to happen over in that property. I assure all the neighbors over there about that. So, I just want to say, we hear you and I think, you know, most of us support you. In fact, I bet, I suspect, without speaking for anybody else, that knowing what we know now, things would be a lot different had we had that opportunity four years ago to make that happen. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to just jump in here for a minute and thank everybody for coming out tonight and speaking and waiting patiently through her other meeting and everybody at home who joined us as well. I want to thank the members of the Conservation Commission and the spokesperson, Mr. Olson, for coming in and reassuring us about the brownfield situation in the town. That extra information is always helpful and we appreciate your volunteerism to look out for our environment in the community. And again, I would encourage the members of the community that live on Park Place, if you have further information you'd like to share with us, it's council@groton-ct.gov. And feel free to reach out at any time, or if you get the information, Mr. Burt, he can forward it on to us. So, thank you very much and we're happy to hear your concerns. All right. Very good. Thank you. We are on to the-
Yes, indeed. I'll make a note to move the content calendar consisting of items 2021-6659 various appointments and reappointments for September, 2021-703, September 7, 2021 minutes, 2021-705, Special Trust Fund, September. And Madam Mayor, would you like me to read the names of?
Let's get a second first, Council Bordelain.
Yes.
Is there a second on consent calendar?
Second, Franco.
Franco, thank you. Yes, if you'd like to read the names and then I have some corrections.
Yes. For Special Trust Fund, the following individuals contributed to various funds held by the town. Deb Finco, Susan Blyer, Chelsea Groton Foundation, First United Methodist Church, John and Robin Silsby, Lee Vincent, Joseph and Arlene Atwood, Roderick Melendez Richardson. And the following individuals made monetary donations to the Groton Food Locker, Nancy Bernhardt, Vincent and Carol Spooner, Charles Ebbinghaus, Vincent and Carol Spooner, and Clear Light Bakery.
Thank you.
Thank you for your very charitable donations to our community.
Thank you. And I have, there are some things in the minutes that I need to be addressed, please, on page 14 of the packet. Item 8.1, Town Counselors, in the paragraph that begins, "Mayor Granatowski," the woman's name is Joanne Donnell, D-O-N-N-E-L, of the Groton Elks. She is the lead person at the Groton Elks. The second item is on page 23 of the packet and it's the last paragraph. The-
I'm sorry, I'm not using your packet. I'm using the-
Give me one second, please.
Page eight.
Page eight. Page eight of the minutes. Roman numeral 8.1, Town Counselors, first paragraph, Joanne Donnell, D-O-N-N-E-L.
Yes, I've got that one.
Thank you. Page 17 of the minutes, last paragraph, a motion to send this item. It should say, "Back to Committee of the Whole." And then the last thing is page 20, hold on a second, I got to get you the, this is page 21 at the adjournment. Instead of conscience, it should say consensus. Anything else on the minutes? Seeing them, we will vote.
About Mayor?
Yes.
Not on the minutes, but on the reappointments?
Yes.
So, just, I, I know in previous, a couple of council meetings ago, we brought up a certain individual who's being reappointed. And just, maybe I, appropriate question to answer the chair. You know, when folks are seeking reappointment to, reappointment to a committee, is there any effort to potentially probe or ask the community as to whether or not they would like to serve on those boards or commissions? I'm noticing just a lot of folks who have seemed to have been on certain commissions for some time. And I know some of these committees, such as like the Permanent School Building Committee, we've, they've, you know, we've, we've had extensive work on, done to build new schools. And so, you know, perhaps, you know, since then, there are a lot of new families and parents who may be involved in the school system that may be interested in serving on one of those committees. And so, instead of belaboring the, the discussion, I'll let you have the floor.
Yeah, yeah. I think, I think the town clerk's office does her, you know, advertising, trying to get people to come out and volunteer. It's, if, if someone's term is up and they wish to serve again, generally, we approve, approve that. But there have been cases where we've requested that they come speak to us again anyway so we can reconsider. But generally, it is, if it's someone's wish to continue their service, we, we accept. And that's mainly a function of having trouble finding just a quorum on most of these, on most of these committees.
Thank you. All right, we will vote on the consent calendar. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
I, I am not opposed. I'm for.
I'm also for it.
Any opposed? Baumgartner, any abstentions? So, that passes eight in favor, one opposed, Baumgartner, zero abstentions. Thank you. We are on to communications and reports. And I'm going to start this evening so that I'm sure I do not forget. This is our first council meeting since our town historian, James Streeter, has spoken to us and requested that a committee be reconvened to look at the Veterans Memorial. So, I had sent an email to the full council providing the list of names that Mr. Streeter had suggested. And I asked for a response, if you objected to any of them. I received nothing but one favorable opinion. So, this evening, I will be appointing James Streeter of 64 Pleasant Street, Groton, Matthew Morton, 67 Mariners Lane, Mystic, Daniel Royce, 31 St. Joseph Court, Groton, Leanne O'Bree, 8 Vista Point Road, Groton, George Highland, 6 Branford Circle, Groton, and Kevin Trejo, 536 Shenacostet Road, Groton, to the ad hoc Groton Veterans Memorial Park Committee. Madam Clerk, if you could just put together an email, please, and just notify these people that they have been-
I sure will. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Burt and I were invited to meet with Zell Stever, Chairman of the Groton Resilience and Sustainability Task Force, as a couple of reporters from the Hartford Current had reached to him. They had heard of the good work that our council and the town is doing with regard to climate change. So, we had a meeting at Mr. Stever's house where we had answers to their questions. They ask us lots of questions. And I don't know when that will appear in the paper, but I'm assuming Mr. Stever will let us know when it is there. All right, councilors. Council Baumgartner. Communications, I'm sorry.
Oh. Yes, I attended with Council Bordelain the ribbon cutting for the Tri-Town Trail, the first phase opening, the first two-mile leg of proposed route that will go from Preston down to Bluff Point. This has been a, a matter and we're an effort that has really widespread support throughout not just the three towns, but the entire region. And it's really gaining steam. It's also a project that really has its roots here in Groton, you know, at a time when, as mentioned tonight, that, you know, this council in particular has really spear, led the effort on supporting enhanced investments in open space. And, you know, we cannot, you know, we certainly have to thank the volunteers that are leading the effort today, but we also have to thank those who came before us, who began these, you know, these discussions and came up with these extraordinary ideas to provide access to coastal access and access to our open spaces. And so, you know, with that, one thing I would like us to do, especially when we begin having meetings again with the city, is really engaging them on ensuring that we can have access go through, for the Tri-Town Trail go through the Groton Utilities Reservoir. The plan is to extend that trail to Bluff Point. And that is something that this council has opined on in the past, as, you know, the, the trail will go through our entire town. And so, I say engage with the city because the reservoir is held by the city and owned and maintained by the city. So, with that, just want to thank all the volunteers from Groton who have been involved in the planning over the years and have gotten to the point that I know, actually, Tom Olson was there. He's been a, a major contributor to the success of the trail. So, nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Parker, communications?
I attended the TBCCA meeting last week. I will type up a report and email it to Town Clerk, Ms. McCausure, to include in our meeting minutes as well as to the council, because there are a couple of items coming up. There is, the energy assistance program is going on, so please start applying if you need it. I will post on the Facebook page and send the flyer to Mr. Burt to see if he can get that posted out for us. And as was stated previously, while I was late this evening, I've been attending the Board of Ed teacher negotiations and still working on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Parker. Council Franco, communications?
Nothing to report at this time.
Council Heed, do you have communications?
I have no communications.
Thank you. Council O'Bree, communications? Council O'Bree, do you have communications? Not sure if we lost Council O'Bree? All right, let's go on. Council Bordelain, communications?
Thank you. Just the same as Councilor Baumgartner, it was great to attend the ribbon cutting of the Tri-Town Trails. I remember this being brought up many years ago, way before I ever got involved in politics. And so, it's great to see the start of it. And the turnout was amazing. Food, music, animals, I mean, everything you want and a chance to even go out on the trail. One of the things that was really important is the, the 17 bridge structures that were built that, you know, really make that part accessible. So, and the excitement and energy that was there, people are excited to be able to, you know, travel that trail and connect, the connectivity. But the most important thing was to see three towns come together and make an idea happen, at least the first leg of it. So, that's, that's really important. I hope that this will grow the volunteer base, maybe make a, there's a trail hiking group, I think, at the middle school level, but maybe at the high school level, there'll be some partnerships between Ledgerd and Fitch to do like trail clearing and get some of our youth out there and help maintain this for, you know, generations to come. So, I align my marks with Councilor Baumgartner in respects to, I did some research after to see like what other towns and municipalities have done for easements through areas such as the reservoir. And it does happen and it can happen. And I encourage that our town make it happen and allow for that accessibility, which would be instrumental in making the connectivity happen. And I know that some folks there, you know, are hoping. And I, I too hope that that will happen in time. But exciting for the three towns and it, excited to see and hope that we host one of the next cuttings on our side of town and invite everybody to come. So, really enjoyed that. Also, have to say, attended, you're going to hear a lot of this, I know Rachel has been with the baseball, so, marching band, they did amazing. They had a competition Saturday at NFA and they, I don't remember exactly what they placed, but they did an amazing job nevertheless. And it was just great to be out in, in the music and remember that we will have our own home show here in October at Fitch. I hope it's supported and people will come out and volunteer time and donate, you know, do whatever you can to be a part of it. Thank you.
I just wanted to note that at 9:06, Council O'Bree had to leave us. She's a little under the weather. So, we're eight councilors, we still have a quorum. Council Melendez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I just wanted to acknowledge that Children First Groton has two new co-chairs. And I just want to thank the outgoing Chair- just want to thank the outgoing Chair, Susan Corries, for all her service to the town over many years. Groton has won hundreds of thousands of dollars of grants to Groton that we wouldn't have gotten had it not been for the extra work that they put in, so I just want to thank her for that.
Thank you, Councilor Melendez. Councilor Zepary, communications?
No report.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Burt, or Clerk of the Representative Town Meeting, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk?
Okay, I'm here. So the Representative Town Meeting did not have a meeting last month, as you know, but they are scheduled for October 17th for their regular meeting. They do have a Finance Committee meeting and a, that's scheduled for October 7th. That's going to be a Zoom meeting, and there's six o'clock, and then there's also on the same night, October 7th, there's a Community Development Service Committee, Community Development and Service Committee meeting. They're discussing finalizing the advertisement for Student Liaison for the RTM, which is going to be fun. And then I do want to report, we still have a vacancy in the 4th District, got to be a Democrat, that was Representative Wash, Whitehouse, who resigned last month and is now serving on the Economic Development Commission.
Clerk of the Council?
Hello again, it's me, Clerk of the Council. I will report, we issued 86 absentee ballots for the upcoming municipal election, I'm sure you wanted to know that, and seven have been returned, so it's kind of slow going, but we're early into the process since we just started issuing them last Friday. So also within the clerk's office, we are looking to replace the carpet that's causing illness and probably is throughout the entire complex. You know, when it comes to carpet, mold, it's in carpet, and you cannot get it out, you have to replace it. And I don't want to replace it with more carpet, I'd like something environmentally sound like, maybe linoleum, which is made out of organic material. I'm using grant money that I've been saving, for those expenditures, because it's into the scheme.
Councilor Bordelon has a question. Madam Clerk?
I'm not sure if you're able to answer it, Madam Clerk, or it might be for the voter registration. I know in the primary, it was spoken about that S.P. Butler and the, we've been using the Ziberski House, might not be polling stations in this upcoming election. Is that up or posted, or are we still going to keep those polling stations the same? Do you know?
Everything, yep, everything's on the website about the upcoming election. All offices are the same that we used in the primary and the last election, so the 1st District is the Groton Public School Library, 2nd District is the Ziberski House over on Beach Pond Road, 3rd District is Municipal Building, 4th District is Mary Morrison School, 5th District is the School Administration Building, 6th District is S.P. Butler School, and 7th District is at the High School. Central Counting for absentee ballots will be at the Senior Center. Oh, boy. And then you also asked about, what else? All the voting information as far as when you can register, when's the last day you register, which I can tell you, but you'll forget, it's seven days before, but we do have Election Day registration. It's kind of silly that the laws haven't caught up with each other. You have a week before the election to register to vote, yet if you find on Election Day you're not registered to vote, you can register to vote and cast a ballot. So Election Day registration, EBR, those will also be counted at the Senior Center.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Town Manager, communications, sir?
Yes, wanted to mention a couple of things. One, the fall giveaway, free COVID protection materials, that's going to be at two events, bumpers and books at the library on Saturday, October 16th, from 11:00 to 1:00, and at the Senior Bazaar at the Senior Center on October 30th, from 9:00 to 1:00. And each pack is 10 surgical masks, five sets of four sizes of gloves, two packages of sanitation wipes, two small hand sanitizers, and a fact sheet on COVID protection tips. That's a pretty nice giveaway that they'll be doing, led by the Planning and Economic Development using the CDBG grant we had received previously for protection materials. And then, I just received the flyer towards the end of the day, this should be pretty much everywhere tomorrow, but in terms of part of the getting public input for the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act funding, as we mentioned before, there's a public open house next, on two Tuesdays, two nights from this week, on October 19th. We did add a Councilor Bordelon suggestion, it was a good suggestion, daytime one also. That is in conjunction with the city, so we'll be at the, so from 1:00 to 3:00 that day on the 19th, and this, like I said, we're going to put this out everywhere, from 1:00 to 3:00 Groton City Hall, and then from 6:30 to 8:30 at the, right here at the Senior Center that night. But it should be everywhere, Facebook and newspaper, coming up shortly. I think that's it, other than getting a lot of good comments on the painting of the trim of the, of the Town Hall. Apparently more people pay attention to those things than I would have done.
Thank you. I don't believe there's any departments here.
I have a question for the Town Manager.
Yes.
Seeing that the turkeys in downtown Groton have become extremely popular in our community, I was wondering if we could possibly put in signs about turkey crossings that are going through downtown Mystic, I mean, not Mystic, downtown Groton, maybe in the whole area that those Delma and Louise seem to be traveling.
I did talk to, and she, Councilor Franco had run this by me earlier today, so I did check with Engineering and Public Works. DOT will not allow it on, it's not one of the, there are several animal signs they allow, and that's not one of them. We could, Traffic Authority could approve on side streets, so like, you could put a little ways, you know, if it was outside of the highway or the state right-of-way, just down a little ways, we could, but not on the right-of-way for the state itself. I actually have a, I've got all the animal signs that are allowed. We could do wild horses if you'd like, or moose.
So turkeys are not considered on...
It's not one of the, it's not one of the state's approved sides, unfortunately. We can, like I said, we could do something on a side street, but Greg's looking at it, so we are looking at it.
All right. Thank you, I appreciate that.
They are dangerous, $1,300 damage to my car from a turkey. Councilor Bordelon, did you have a question for the Burt Manager?
Yeah, I just wanted to touch base with the Town Manager about the report for the King property. I did check my email, I do not have it, so if you could send it again, it would be great.
No, that was the Park Place. King is not out yet.
Oh, King is not out, but Park Place you sent?
Yeah, it's a few weeks, so it's part of a weekly report. I'll reset it tomorrow. In terms of the King property, Public Works is putting information together, they're going to put a little cover sheet to it, so that is forthcoming, they just need a little more time with it.
Okay, perfect, and thank you. I think it's great to hear that we're going to have a daytime meeting for the outreach.
Oh, and I do have, you had asked me a question previously to, sorry, one last item, if it's okay.
No, you're fine.
You'd asked about having somebody who's, can help with enrollment for healthcare plans. The library is actually already working with Access Health to set up a couple nights, as well as they also work with Morin Association, do the same, so they are setting dates up for that.
Okay, and those are also going to be posted on the website?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I do have dates for Morin, I don't have the date yet for the Access Health. October 9th and 23rd, they'll be the Morin Associates, they're working with people.
Perfect. Great. Thank you.
All right, committee reports. We just had Committee of the Whole, so everybody lived that. Personnel appointments, Chairman Melendez?
Yes, we met on September 21st. We had various, mostly reappointments, but just want to say again, we have two vacancies on our Tax Payment Study Committee, and we can't start that business until they're all filled. So if anyone watching is interested in volunteering, contact the clerk's office.
And that's a very short-term commitment, that's 60 days, so it's short and very targeted, and you get plenty of support from town staff on that. Rules, Councilor Overy is not here, but our other two members of the Rules Committee, did you meet, or is there anything you'd like to share?
Nothing to read.
No report.
Thank you. And Public Safety, Chairman Baumgartner?
No report.
Thank you. We are on to new business. We are going to 2021-7072 Groton Public Schools DODIA Grant on page 31. Councilor Baumgartner?
Resolution approving the Groton Public Schools DODIA Grant, whereas Groton Public Schools Defense Education Activity DODIA Military Connected Academic and Support Programs, MCAESP 2021 Education Resources Grant, and whereas the support from the DODIA Groton Public Schools will develop a K-12 Career Pathway Program, including improving student readiness for college and careers. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council authorizes the Superintendent of Schools, Susan Austin, to accept the $750,000 DODIA MCASTP 2021 Education Resource Grant in the amount of $750,000, and to execute any necessary paperwork to implement the grant, and this will be referred to the RTM, referred to the RTM 6-5-3. So moved.
Second? Bordelon? Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Bordelon. And we just had the discussion in the Committee of the Whole, so we will vote on 2021-707 Groton Public Schools DODIA Grant. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Again, we are at eight councilors. We are on to 2021-6441 Revised Assistant Assessor Job Description, and this is on page 32. Councilor Parker, please.
Resolution approving the revision of the Assistant Assessor Job Description, whereas the Assistant Assessor position was vacated via resignation, and whereas no application received which met the required job qualification of Certified Connecticut Municipal Assessor Designation, and whereas the lack of qualified certified candidates is a statewide problem, and a revision to the required qualifications is expected to generate a wider pool of candidates, and whereas approval is recommended by the town's management staff, therefore be it resolved, the Town Council hereby approves the revision to the Assistant Assessor Job Description. I so move.
Second, Franca. Moved by Parker and seconded by Franco. And just for the public, all of the items that are on our agenda for the council meeting have been discussed at length in Committee of the Whole. All those in favor of 2021-644 Revised Assistant Assessor Job Description, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. We are on to 2021-1482 Debt Policy and Management Fiscal Practices. This is on page 33, and I believe this is Councilor Franco.
Thank you. Resolution increasing the general fund's unassigned fund balance, whereas the town's debt policy and management fiscal practices reads that the town shall maintain an unassigned general fund reserve, maintaining the amount equal to at least 11%, with a gradual increase to a minimum of 15% of annual general fund expenditures, and whereas the current unassigned fund balance percentage is 20% of the adopted FYE 2021 general fund expenditures. Now therefore be resolved that the Town Council amends its debt policy and management fiscal practices and increases the general fund's unassigned fund balance to an amount equal to at least 15% of the annual general fund expenditures, and adds an annual review if the percentage exceeds 20% on a budgetary basis, with any amount up to and including 20% of expenditures not subject to Town Council review after completion and acceptance of the annual audit. I so move.
Second, Parker. Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker. Okay, we will vote on 2021-148 Debt Policy and Management Fiscal Practices. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously, with eight councilors. We are on to 2021-6751 Extension of Appropriation for Groton 2020 School Facilities Plan on page 34. Councilor Heed, please.
I'll make a motion for a resolution extending the appropriation. I have to read the entire page, is that right?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'll make a motion recommending resolution extending the appropriation for the Groton 2020 School Facilities Plan Project, whereas the town of Groton, the town approved ordinance number 284, sorry, at referendum on November 8th, 2016, which appropriated $184 million in authorized borrowing in the same amount for the Groton 2020 School Facilities Plan Project, and ordinance number 284 was amended by ordinance number 291 at referendum on May 6th, 2019, whereas the debt policy and management fiscal practices of the town provide that any appropriation for construction or other permanent improvement which has not been completely expended at the end of five years from the date thereof shall thereupon lapse, whereas the Town Manager has reported that certain additional expenditures remain to be made or financed for the project that cannot be expended or financed by the end of five years from the effective date of the last appropriating ordinance, and has recommended that said appropriation be extended by reappropriating that portion which has not been expended or financed on the effective date of this resolution. Whereas the Director of Finance has certified that whatever portion of said appropriation is extended may be financed by grants and town general obligation bonds previously approved, whereas it is in the best interest of the town to complete the financing of the Groton 2020 School Facilities Plan Project. Now therefore be it resolved that any portion of said appropriation which has not been expended or financed and on the effective date of this resolution shall be extended and reappropriated, provided that the total amount expended or financed as the effective date of this resolution pursuant to said appropriation under ordinance number 284 as amended by ordinance number 291, plus the portion which is reappointed, shall not exceed $184 million. I so...
No, no, you don't. You need to refer to the RTM 653, correct? Please add that?
Yes, refer to RTM 6.5.3. So moved.
Thank you, Councilor. Second, Franca. Moved by Heed and seconded by Franco. And again, I hope this is the last time we have to vote this money. All those in favor of...
This one needs to be a roll call vote.
Would anyone like a roll call vote?
It's required to be a roll call vote on this one.
You're not joking?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we need a roll call vote on 2021-675 Extension of Appropriation for Groton 2020 School Facilities Plan. Councilor Baumgartner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilor Parker?
Aye.
Councilor Franco?
Aye.
Councilor Heed? Councilor Bordelon?
Aye.
Councilor Melendez?
Aye.
Councilor Zepary?
Aye.
And Granatowski also votes aye. Eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions, so moved unanimously. I wish I had my gavel. And done. All right. We are on to 2021-6551 River Road Tree Removal, Scheduling a Public Hearing. This is page 35. Councilor Bordelon?
Yep. I make a motion, make a motion, resolution scheduling a public hearing for a removal of two street trees on River Road. Whereas on September 5th, 1989, by resolution, the Groton Town Council designated River Road as a scenic road according to Town Ordinance Section 13.5-121 to 13.5-124, and whereas the town of Groton Public Works Director has requested to remove two trees from River Road in front of a house, number 151, now there be it resolved that the Town Council will hold a public hearing to remove two trees on River Road on November 3rd, 2021, at 6:30 p.m. I so move.
Second, Franca. Moved by Bordelon and seconded by Franco. This is simply scheduling a public hearing. Councilor Frank, Parker, oh geez. Franco, Parker, Bordelon?
Yeah. I know it was discussed, and it was stated to move it forward to get it down for the safety, but I just want to clarify, John, at that time, if people wanted to bring up constituents about replanting new trees, they can bring that up under the public comment.
Sure. And it does not require any particular action to do that, so the Public Works is looking at doing some replacement plantings.
All right, has anything come forward yet as to what could go there at all?
Not yet, no. They're looking at it, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor of 2021-655 River Road Tree Removal, Scheduling Public Hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. I just want to note, the next item, 2021-6651, should be ARPA, A-R-P-A Grant, A-R-P-A Grant for the Groton Public Library. This is on page 36. Councilor Melendez, please.
Thank you. I make a motion recommending a resolution...
I make a motion recommending a resolution authorizing the Town Manager or his designee to accept the American Rescue Plan Grant Funding to libraries from the Institute of Museum and Library Services to support the Groton community in response to the pandemic. Whereas the Groton Public Library will support the community respond directly and immediately to the pandemic, as well as to related economic and community needs through equitable approaches. Whereas the Institute of Museum and Library Services has funds available for the Town's principal public library to support each library, community, and the country. Whereas the Groton community will benefit from this funding as the library will proactively make purchases based on the community needs, safety, and support services. Resolve that the Groton Town Council hereby authorizes the Town Manager or his designee to accept the American Rescue Plan Grant Funding in the amount of $22,455 from the Institute of Museum and Library Services, IMLS, which will be utilized by the Groton Public Library to respond to the pandemic, including related economic and community needs through equitable approaches. Groton Town Council to refer A-R-P-A library grant funding acceptance request to the representative Town Meeting. I so move.
Second, Parker.
Mr. Burt, does this have to be 653, or can it go normal?
It can go normal.
Okay, thank you. So that was moved by Melendez and then was Parker, seconded by Parker. Thank you. All right, we will vote on 2021-665 ARPA Grant, Groton Public Library. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight councilors. Thank you. Okay. We are on to 2021-6123 Civilian and Police Committee. This begins on page 37. And this is, Counselors Zepari.
I am opposed to this resolution. I would prefer that someone else introduce it.
Okay. Counselor Baumgartner, would you like to, would you read page 37, 2021-612 Civilian and Police Committee, please?
I'd like to skip as well.
All right, I'll read. Thank you, Counselor Parker.
Resolution to establish the Citizens and Police Committee. Whereas the Representative Town Meeting, RTM, established a civilian oversight research committee, CORC, in 2020 with the charge of creating a document with recommendations for full, for the full RTM. And whereas the RTM CORC approved the final report unanimously at their December 1st, 2020 meeting and referred it to the full RTM. And whereas the RTM unanimously approved the CORC report at their December 9th, 2020 meeting and referred it to the Town Council. And whereas the Town Council may refer the final report to the Town's Public Safety Committee. And whereas the Town's Public Safety Committee recommended approval of the CORC final reports. Three consensus recommendations to the Town Council. And whereas the Town Council at their August 24th, 2021 Committee of the Whole meeting recommended approval for the final CORC report consensus recommendation number two, being the establishment of a police and community collaborative group. And whereas the Town Council at their September 7th meeting referred the item back to the Committee of the Whole. And whereas the Town Council at their September 14th, 2021 Committee of the Whole meeting came to a consensus of supporting the final CORC report consensus for recommendations one, two, and three. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Groton Citizens and Police Group is hereby established with the following parameters. Purpose: Build stronger relationships between police and the community. Increase communication, exchange of ideas between the police and community. Advise the police chief, town manager, Town Council, and the Public Safety Committee on police and community issues within the confines of any laws and policies. Membership: There shall be seven voting members of the committee, including the police chief or their designee, and six citizens appointed for two-year terms by the Town Council. The committee shall additionally have the following ex officio members that do not count towards quorum and do not have the ability to vote, town manager or their representative, one Town Council appointed by the Town Council, one Representative Town Meeting member appointed by the Town Council, Groton Public Schools Superintendent or their representative. Training: The committee shall receive occasional training on Connecticut laws pertaining to policing as well as local policies. Meetings the committee shall meet at least quarterly. And name, the committee members can recommend a new name for the committee to the Town Council upon their formation. I so move.
Second, Franca.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Franco. Thank you, Counselor Parker, for reading that for us. Okay. Counselor Bordelon, you should speak to this.
Yeah, I know this has been bounced around and it, you know, had a lot of different things. At one point spoke to be, maybe we should name the thing now. Just the different names that have come through. I just feel that having the RTM members present to talk about this should also have happened. And I personally don't think, like, I don't know, if it's the structure and the outcome, it's, I don't know. I don't think it fully reflects the CORC report and its best intention, in my opinion. I think it's a good diving board and a starting point. I think what the community wanted, you know, and what the advisement was, some things started to get changed and, I don't know. Just not what I intended to say at all. And personally, when reviewing it and after that, some people, you know, it's great to have the police chief and the police involved, but not necessarily have to be both members of a group making decisions. I mean, that kind of deflects from the intentions of having the collaboration. I think the voting, you know, they could be an ex officio or an attendee, just like the Town Manager would, but it doesn't necessarily have voting powers, per se. And the number outweighs six citizens. You know, it's, I don't know, just, not what I had hoped, but. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to do a roll call vote on this one as well. This is 2021-612 Civilian and Police Committee. When I call your name, please say yea or nay, or yes or no, whatever you prefer. Baumgartner?
Nay.
Parker?
Aye.
Franco?
Aye.
Heath?
Aye.
Bordelon?
No.
Melendez?
Aye.
Zepari?
No.
Granatowsky is an aye. One, two, three, four, five in favor. One, two, three opposed. That motion passes. Five in favor, three opposed. We are on to 2021-6731 1208 Quantic Road Brownfield Grant Application. Page 39. Counselor Franco, please.
Make a resolution endorsing the submittal of an application to the State of Connecticut Brownfield Remediation Program for 1208 Quantic Road and to authorize the Town Manager to execute all grant documents and accept grant funding for said grants. Whereas the State of Connecticut has issued a request for proposal for a grant under the Brownfield Remediation Program. And whereas the goal of the State of Connecticut Brownfield's remediation program is to fund remediation, abatement, and demolition activities prior to redevelopment of the Brownfield sites. To encourage public-private partnerships, leveraging the maximum amount of private funds to increase the economic impact of the state's investment. And reactivate long-stalled sites and encouraging job creation. And whereas the Town's application for remediation funding would be for the former Groton Food Mar property located at 1208 Quantic Road, a polluted site that was previously operated as a gas station, which the Town acquired through a tax foreclosure. Now therefore be resolved that the Town Council endorses the submittal of the grant application to the State of Connecticut Brownfield's remediation program and authorizes the Town Manager to sign all required grant documents to apply for, submit, and receive said grant funding. I so move.
Second, Parker.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker. We will vote on 2021-673 1208 Quantic Road Brownfield Grant Application. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight councilors. We are on to 2020-419 Introduction of Ordinance and Setting Public Hearing to Regulate Short-Term Rentals. This is on page 40. Counselor Heath?
I'll make a resolution to schedule a public hearing regarding the adoption of an ordinance to regulate short-term rentals in the Town of Groton. Whereas on September 14th, 2021, the Town Council Committee of the Whole met in regular session and discussed the draft short-term rental ordinance. And whereas the Committee of the Whole at their September 14th, 2021 regular meeting directed the Office of Planning and Development Services to update the ordinance and schedule a public hearing to regulate short-term rentals. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Groton Town Council will hold a public hearing on November 3rd, 2021 to solicit public input regarding the proposed ordinance to regulate short-term rentals. I so move.
Could you add in the time, please?
Second, Zepari.
I'm going to add in the time. November 3rd, 2021 at 6:30 PM. Thank you. Moved by Heath and seconded by Zepari. This was one of the several changes we had in the packet. All those in favor.
Just for discussion.
Yes.
I will be voting against this. I know we've discussed this last meeting. It was among many items that we discussed at length. I very much commend the work our Town staff has done. However, just over the course of the last couple of weeks, on discussions I've had with multiple property owners, residents in Groton, and certainly, you know, reading up on what other municipalities are doing, and even some of our various, whether it's subdivisions or independent zoning commissions that have opined on this very topic. I do have some reservations about moving forward in ordinance that I believe may not address some of the concerns I still have. One thing I brought up in the last meeting was the, really, the definition of a property owner. How do we define a property owner? Is it somebody who resides in a home that is renting out their property, you know, during the summer months, when they may be vacationing elsewhere, or may be renting out to help pay, you know, a property tax burden, as we've heard from many residents? Or is this an individual, or is the property owner an individual or entity that may not even visit Mystic or Groton at any point during their, you know, throughout the year? So I think we do need to define that a little bit more. Part of the reason I'm fearful about voting it to, to sending it to the public hearing is if we send this ordinance to the public hearing and we look to make any changes in the form of amendments, once after we've heard the public hearing, will we even permitted to, to introduce amendments and will they be germane to the discussion? So I think you get where I'm getting at.
Yeah, sure, I understand, Counselor Baumgartner. As long as it's brought up at the public hearing, any major ones, you could of course make minor tweaks on the fly, but if it's a major change, then as long as you bring it up at the public hearing, it can be changed for the final version.
And just so, on the record, you know, I do support Airbnb, the ability for folks to, you know, to stay in our community. But I, I do not believe that we should be supporting large company, or, you know, companies coming in and purchasing homes and really breaking apart neighborhoods when neighborhoods are not zoned for commercial entities, they're zoned to remain residential, residential neighborhoods. So I really hope we can work out some of that language even before we get to that point. And, you know, but because of that, I will be voting no. Again, not, not against any of the work that has already been done on this matter. Thank you.
I'm going to speak briefly on this because I know we have been over this for quite a long time now. I just, I would ask you to reconsider because I feel it's important at this point that we hear from the public. We've been working on this since 2019 off and on. Due to the pandemic, we were put on the lull and, you know, several councilors served on this, and we've done a lot of work on this. The staff has done a lot of work on this. And I really want to have something before the public so they can come out and speak to us and tell us what they're interested in and what their concerns are. So I think to move it forward at this point to the public hearing stage is vital. Whatever we get back from the public at that point will probably be left to the next council, so someone else will be sitting in this chair. But I hope you, you know, whoever returns will take it up and continue and, you know, while listening to the public, do what you feel is best for the Town. So I really encourage you to go forward with the public hearing. Thank you. All right, seeing no other discussion, I'm sorry, Counselor Bordelon, go ahead.
I see both sides of this as one of the councilors who's served on this committee, but also a lot has changed in our community as well. I don't know. I mean, I hate, I mean, we're stacking the agendas pretty heavy and moving things very quickly. And I do think it is important to bring it before the public, but in a manner in which what we really intend for it to do. So that is a concern. As it sits now, as you stated, depending on what happens at the public comment, then it could be changed at that point. But not if a counselor has an idea or thought to move to change it, just to what comes out of public comment, or what would be the rules coming into that.
Let's have Mr. Burt speak to that.
You just, if a council member wants to bring something up, you should go on record during the public comment also. Now let's say you all totally forget to bring something up and it comes up at the final stage, you would just have to take it back and do another public hearing if it's a major change.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. I mean, I do think that there could be some more work done on this document. I mean, I think we need some more time, I personally think, to deliberate on it. I mean, we were pulling through, like, how many hours the person had to respond, like, I mean, I still think that that's off. That number is, you know, not feasible for the average person if you're out of town for the day and your phone's off, or you work a late shift for eight or 10 hours, you know, if you can't have your phone on at all. So there's just little things like that that, you know, really need to be looked at to be reasonable accommodations. So, I don't know. So we need a full, to move this to a hearing, is this a simple majority, or?
Five, yeah, five affirmative votes.
Sorry?
Yes, five affirmative votes.
Okay, we will vote on 2020-41 Introduction of Ordinance and Setting Public Hearing to Regulate Short-Term Rentals. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Baumgartner, Bordelon, any abstentions? That passes. Six in favor, two opposed, Baumgartner, Bordelon, zero abstentions. Okay. 2021-6761 American Rescue Plan Act Public Outreach Process. Page 45. Counselor Bordelon.
I'm going to pass.
Counselor Melendez, would you read that one for us, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
I make a motion recommending a resolution to approve the American Rescue Plan Act Public Outreach Process. Whereas the Town of Groton is the recipient of federal funds from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. And whereas the Town has received 50% of the total $8,587,894.04 in funds and will receive the remainder in mid-2022. And whereas the Town recognizes the receipt of these funds to be a unique opportunity. And whereas the Town intends to solicit input in a variety of methods to ensure these funds are spent wisely. And whereas the Town of Groton's Long-Term Recovery Committee recommended a process for obtaining public input at their September 15th, 2021 meeting. Now be it resolved that the Town of Groton approves the Recovery Fund Needs Assessment and Allocation Plan dated September 9th, 2021. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Melendez and seconded by Baumgartner. We'll vote on 2021-676 American Rescue Plan Act Public Outreach Process. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously.
It was referred to RTM, correct?
No, this is.
Madam Mayor?
Madam Clerk, I don't believe this one has to go to the RTM. This is just the process that we're using.
Yeah, it does not have to go to the RTM.
This isn't any, this isn't any expenditure. We are on to This isn't any, this isn't any expenditure. We are on to 2021 674, ARPA Coordinator Position. This is page 46. Counselor Zepary?
Resolution authorizing the town manager to hire an A-R-P-A Coordinator Position. Whereas the American Rescue Plan Act, A-R-P-A, of 2021 established the Coronavirus State and Local Physical Recovery Fund in approximately, approximately $350, $50 billion to bolster local response to the COVID-19 emergency and its economic impact. And whereas the Town of Groton will be awarded approximately $8.6 million in funding set to be administered in two branches of approximately $4,300,000. And whereas this A-R-P-A Coordinator Position would manage to fund the projects, process all of the A-R-P-A Grant Award, Awardees, it'd be the first point of contact for A-R-P-A related requests and questions. Staff the Long Term Recovery Committee, provide support for the town council, and handle all reporting requirements outlined by federal regulation. And whereas the A-R-P-A Coordinator will act as the A-R-P-A liaison to greater community and be positioned in the Economic and Community Development Division of the Office of Planning and Development. And whereas the A-R-P-A Coordinator is a 40-hour-per-week position, mid-level, non-union, salary, temporary position for a period of three to four years in budgeted funding to the Town of Groton with a salary range of $66,344 to $77,443. Therefore, now be it resolved, the Town of Groton authorized the creation of the A-R-P-A Coordinator Position and directs the town manager to fill the A-R-P-A Coordinator Position immediately. I so move.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Zepary and seconded by Franco that the town council authorizes the creation of the position. All those in favor of 2021 674, ARPA Coordinator Position, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are on to Room Number 10M, 2021 679-1, American Rescue Plan Act Near Term Funding Needs. This begins on page 47. And I don't know if mine was the only one that was not corrected, but the second, whereas, Counselor Baumgartner, should be mid-2022, correct, Mr. Burt?
Correct.
Counselor Baumgartner, could you take this one?
Yes.
Thank you.
Whereas the Town of Groton is the recipient of federal funds for the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. And whereas the town has received 50,000 of the total $8 million-
Fifty percent.
I'm sorry.
Fifty percent.
Yes, has received 50% of the total $8,587,894.04 in funding and will receive the remainder in mid-2021.
22.
Sorry, that's a mistake. I'm sorry, I meant 2022. And whereas the town recognizes the receipt of those funds to be a unique opportunity. And whereas the town intends to solicit input in a variety of methods to ensure these funds are spent wisely. And whereas the town also recognizes that there are also immediate needs that must be addressed. And whereas the Town of Groton has previously approved funding for Leglite Health District in the amount of $85,878.94, along with funding for the Southeast Connecticut Council of Governments in the amount of $56,364.06. And whereas the Town of Groton's Long Term Recovery Committee recommended additional funding be set aside for near-term needs at their September 15th, 2021 meeting. Now be it resolved that Town of Groton approves additional American Rescue Plan Act funding in the amount of $357,757 we set aside for the following uses. Town of Groton Navigator Position, 100K. Human Services Needs, 150K. Miscellaneous Needs, $107,757. Be it resolved that the Groton Town Council refers the American Rescue Plan Act Near Term Funding Needs Request to the Representative Town Meeting via 6.5.3. So moved.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Franco. Thank you. Okay, we will vote on 2021 679, American Rescue Plan Act Near Term Funding Needs. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight counselors. Okay. And the last item is Other Business, 2028-949, Open Agenda Item Review, October, page 49, and actually page 50, has the list of open agenda items. Counselor Baumgartner, you have your hand up?
Yes, I believe the council is set to have the cannabis smoking ban in tax discussions the same day the Planning and Zoning Commission is opining on this, on whether or not they will permit cannabis establishment within town limits. And for even counselors that want to participate in that, we would not be permitted to do so because both meetings are in the same evening. And I think it would be extremely onerous on individuals who would like to opine on it from being able to participate if they have to worry about attending two meetings at the same time regarding a very similar issue.
Mr. Burt, is that the correct date for planning?
Yes.
Okay.
That's already been noticed. I mean, we can certainly push this off for our thing, but we still have a meeting at the same time.
So that's what I would recommend.
So noted, thank you. Let me make a note on my list here.
Okay, are we changing that then? Are we?
Yeah. The agenda-
26?
Did you do the agenda already for the 12?
Yeah, we'll just have to ignore it. At least it's left to the receiving.
Can we just put it later in the meeting, maybe?
What's that?
Can we change the order of our meeting and put it later?
As of now, it'll be in the packet. And so, you know, the council can just, you know, push it off or push that later.
You can just hold off on it until the 26, if people choose. Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Melendez.
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are adjourned at 9:54 PM. Thank you, everybody.